Thank you for coming tonight. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council session for this Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell has been excused. Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. If you'd please stand and join me first in a moment of silence in recognition of the 9/11 Day of Remembrance, which will occur this Friday here in the city of Lakewood at City Hall at 2:00 P.M., followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. First, we have our Proclamations and Presentations section of tonight's agenda. The first proclamation will be that declaring September 11, 2022, as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. And for this, I would ask the Chief Mike Zarro with our Lakewood Police Department and Deputy Chief Hallie McCurdy from West Pierce and Fire, join me at the podium. Well, thank you for joining me tonight and all members of the City Council as we thank all of our first responders, certainly here in the city of Lakewood and around our country as we commemorate this day in which many men and women lost their lives. Whereas on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent lives of men, women, and children who had been going about their normal routines were taken from us, depriving our families and loved ones of a lifetime of precious moments. And whereas in the years that followed, we worked to rebuild our nation more sound and resilient than ever before, united and determined to strengthen our country's character with acts of endurance and hope, renewal, and progress. And whereas the pain inflicted on our nation on September 11 was felt by people of every race, background, and faith, though many young Americans have grown up without knowing firsthand the horrors of that day, their lives have been shaped by it. And whereas the compassion that rose in the hearts and minds of the American people following September 11 serves as the ultimate rebuke on those who wish evil on this great nation. And whereas first responders who risked and gave their lives to rescue others demonstrated the unwavering heroism that defines our nation today. And whereas on Friday, September 9, 2022, at 2:00 P.M. here in the city of Lakewood, a remembrance ceremony will be held at Lakewood City Hall to reflect on the 21st anniversary of the attacks, the lives lost, and to pay tribute to the families who still live with this extraordinary pain. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 11, 2022 as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. And we urge all residents to observe a moment of silence to honor the innocent victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks of September 11, 2001, and to observe this day with remembrance in honor of these individuals. Proclaim this sixth day of September 22, Jason Whalen, Mayor. And on behalf of your respective departments, I have a proclamation for each of you, and thank you for your continuing service to our community, and the floor is certainly yours.
I just wanted to thank the, thank the council and the city of Lakewood for continuing to recognize this, this day in our history. And I look forward to seeing all of you on Friday at 2:00.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen and council. It is still very important to recognize the, the loss from 21 years ago because it is still very real for a lot of the families who lost loved ones, not just on that day, but for those, you know, veterans who fought in the war on terror after that date. So recognizing that day and keeping it alive and in our memories is important for all of those people that lost and sacrificed after 9/11. So thank you very much.
Yeah, exactly. Next, we're honored to present a proclamation recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2022 as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Lakewood. And I would ask that Jose Gonzalez, Veterans Roofers, join Councilmember Linda Farmer at the podium to receive the proclamation.
I'm very pleased to have Mr. Gonzalez here tonight. I understand you're a longtime resident of Lakewood from elementary school all the way through. I just celebrated my 19th year here, and I always think that's a long time until I talk to folks that have been here twice and sometimes three times as long. So I'm proud of your heritage here. I understand that your business, Veteran Roofing Roofers, has been in business for over 40 years. That's fantastic. And for all that you give back to community, if anybody represents and embodies community here in Lakewood, it's Veteran Roofers. And so thank you for being here. So I've got a proclamation here. So whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans represent the largest minority group in the United States with more than 60 million residents, and in Lakewood, more than 11,500 people of Hispanic or Latino heritage call our city home and have helped build and strengthen our community for generations at every level. And whereas we proudly celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, an observation that began in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1988, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, programs, and revisiting our history. And whereas from September 15 through October 15, we will give special attention to honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latin Americans contribute to the fabric of our community by celebrating our common goals, learning about their diverse cultures, and working toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs that make our nation great while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas in Lakewood, Hispanic and Latino Americans are a significant and fast-growing demographic representing the largest minority group, and their contributions to the city are invaluable, including through small business ownership, volunteerism, workforce support. And whereas the city of Lakewood is grateful for businesses like Veteran Roofers, owned by longtime Lakewood resident Jose Gonzalez, who for the last two years volunteered to assist the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce with its Night of Lights Blue Light Campaign, and hung lights on the roof lines of downtown businesses exemplifying what it means to give back to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Almost done. In the city of Lakewood, the city of Lakewood, oh, in the, sorry, in the city of Lakewood, and encourages our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans at our Fiesta de la Familia Street Festival on Saturday, September 17, 2022, from 4:00 P.M. to 7:45 P.M. at Colonial Plaza. Proclaimed this sixth day of September, 2022, Jason Whalen, Mayor.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, City Council. Also like to thank Linda Smith, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, for giving us opportunity. Military transplant, being a veteran myself is really an honor to see this population, especially from this city where I grew up at, and it gives me the opportunity actually to give back to the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. And if we could, if we could steal you just for a minute, we'll take a photograph with Ms. Grimley. Next, we're pleased to invite Mr. Hank Jones, our youth council member, to come on up and give us the youth council report.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the Lakewood City Council. My name is Hank, and I am back for another year. The youth council has our first meeting of the session tomorrow, and we're all so enthusiastic to be back in these chambers and start gathering again. Mayor Whalen, you were there to help us at our kickoff event last month, where we all got to know each other a little bit better and bond as a team. And I can already tell, as I'm sure you can, that we have a phenomenal group of kids this year that I'm really excited about. Over the summer, I had a lot of great meetings with our amazing coordinator Shannon about what the youth council should look like this year. Firstly, we decided to create an executive council within our organization to assist with planning and facilitating our monthly meetings. So Brandon Elliott, along with myself, have the honor of serving as the appointed co-chairs of the council, and Angel Ramirez, a secretary of the council for the school year. So look forward to hearing a lot more from them. Our exec council also decided that we would like to formalize our expectations and our goals as a collective. We formed a new mission statement for our organization that I would like to read to you. It reads as follows. The Lakewood Youth Council aims to represent and empower the voices of young people throughout the city. Appointed members work alongside the Lakewood City Council and serve as student liaisons to city committees and in advisory capacity to ensure that the issues facing students are centered in municipal policy. Members of the council are committed to demonstrating leadership as likuidians and are actively involved in community organizations and city events and service roles. The motto of the youth council is service, teamwork, integrity, respect, or STIR, if you prefer the acronym. We also formalized new attendance standards and personal conduct expectations for our members, which we will be distributing tomorrow evening at our inaugural meeting for the session. Now for the fun stuff. Our capstone achievement of each session is, of course, the youth summit, which corresponds to our theme and goals for the year. Last May, our summit had a focus on mental health and workforce development, aimed at meeting needs that were expressed heavily by students after experiencing the pandemic. This year, we are expanding our focus to fostering youth leadership. We are still in the very early planning stages, and everything is preliminary. But this spring, our goal for the summit is to have our city be a hub for young leaders and put Lakewood on the map as a place where go-getters thrive. We want to collaborate with other leadership organizations in the state to attract students interested in networking, seeking professional opportunities, and growing their abilities to reach their full potential. Students will practice a combination of soft and hard skills aimed at improving their confidence and helping them become the ambitious and capable adults that they want to be. You know, whether it's practicing public speaking, crafting a winning resume, or just getting in touch with the right people to learn. This youth summit will be about helping leaders lead, teaching them what they can, and turn poor outwards into their communities. That's our plan for the year. Again, we have a fantastic team this session, and I can't wait to share with you what else we have in store as the year goes on. Thank you for your time, and I can take any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Hank. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions? Mr. Jones, Mr. Branstadter.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you for having me.
Glad to have you here. Thank you for, for, for being here, and I appreciate the outline of the youth council having an ambitious plan, being able to go forward and doing that. I would just say that one thing that I didn't hear in your comments that I think it will be important to get some youth perspective in the next couple of months has to do with, with library services here in Lakewood, where we're, we're sort of at a point of where there are some decisions to be made about how that is going to move forward, to be able to go and do that, and certainly that libraries are used by many groups within the community, but but youth is one of those. Okay? And so that I urge your group to keep abreast of how that process is moving along and where there is a youth perspective that the council should be aware of as, 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 as both we and that the Library District Board is, is, is going forward to make decisions. There is a role for you to play.
Councilman, firstly, thank you for serving as our liaison again this year. We're excited about that. In what ways would you envision youth giving input on that process? And how do you think we could help?
Well, the, the, the matter of library services is, I think, very still much in a, in a fact-finding and refining options stage. And it'll move from that stage, I think, close to the end of this year to be able to go and, go and do that. But that it's important that both the library board and, and the, and the community are together on their expectations of both for a temporary library situation and for a long-term permanent library situation so that this is not a, a problem that we have to find a Band-Aid for, but that it's an opportunity that we can build the community's future on.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for coming. I'm sure there's some homework to be done.
Yes, definitely. Thank you for your time.
Welcome. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Next, we have the Clover Park School District report to be presented by the board member and director, Alyssa Anderson Pearson.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. It was, it's been an exciting time in the school district back to school. So most students went back last week on the 31st. And, but our kindergarteners started today. So there was a lot of smiling faces as I think the district posted on the website, lots of tears from parents, lots of smiling faces from the kindergarteners. So it was very exciting. So we're now serving more than 12,000 students, and we have welcomed more than 120 new teachers. I was actually at the Professional Development Day, which is kind of the kickoff for the teachers, and I have to tell you, the energy was great. People are excited to be back to school. Everyone acknowledges that COVID is not over, but it almost seems like kind of in the rearview mirror as far as learning goes. So everyone's really excited to be back in the classroom and just have a sense of mostly normal this year. Let's see. For, we're redistricting the director district, so I'm just kind of going to read this part because there's kind of a lot to it, and there's probably going to be a lot of conversation about it. And it was also posted in the Suburban Times today. So we are conducting a redistricting, redistricting process to comply with federal and state laws due to two reasons. The recent boundary transfer of territory from the Bethel School District, that was on JBLM, and, and and then the review of the federal census data. So it was actually the federal census data and the fact that we were starting this process when we were alerted that, about the boundary issue with the Bethel School District. So we had to fix the Bethel School District issue, and then we went forward with the redistricting. So we've been in talks about this for quite some time. So state law and district policy and procedure require that the redistricting plan, the redistricting plan result in the population of each internal director district be as nearly equal as possible, among other criteria. So based on the federal census data, CPSD has a total population of 90,811 people, which means that each director district would contain about 18,162 people if all of us or all the districts had equal population. Currently, Director District 5 has a total population that is significantly higher than the other four districts, 27.1% more than the targeted population. So we hired an outside firm, Davis Demographics, to develop three scenarios, which the three scenarios came from our standard operating procedures. We asked for three, three options, using census data for the board's consideration. At the public meeting on August 29, the board selected op, the option three as the draft plan to publish for public feedback. And that plan would reduce the total population variance between director districts from 35.2% to 7.8%. The other two options had higher variances, so the lowest variance was chosen. So I'm, and I'm saying this because it was in the Suburban Times article today as well. If option three is approved by the board, the current director, District 5, current director in District 5 would move into District 3. So when District 3 comes up for election, then that director could run again. So details of the draft plan are available on the Clover Park School District website. And the board will hear public comment at, at the September 12 regular meeting. And we will vote on the final adoption at the October 10 board meeting. So there will be public comment available this coming Monday if anyone wants to come and speak about the boundaries. Just to reiterate, a third party did the boundary lines, and then we just voted on. So far, we voted on the lowest variance as a draft plan to move forward in the process. Late start Wednesdays begin September 21, and the district will implement one hour late starts most Wednesday mornings. And during this common time, certified staff across the district will meet in grade level or department teams to review and analyze student data, revise teaching strategies and practices, and collaborate to improve student achievement. Some administrative updates, there's quite a few of them, but I just wanted to say a few main ones. We hired Gloria Henderson as a new assistant superintendent for secondary schools. Tim Stoltz is no longer the principal of Clover Park High School, but he does still work in the district as the new director of career and college readiness. Renee McCord, who was the assistant principal at Clover Park, is now the principal. We have new principals or assistant principals at Oakbrook Elementary, Merryweather Elementary, Lakeview Hope Academy, and Evergreen Elementary School. So other people have shifted within the district, but those are the main ones. Just as a reminder about the school safety zone, I understand that school buses and the flashing lights slow people down when they're going to work, but it really is important that you go to the speed limit in the school zones and stop for the buses. However, some people stop for the buses when they don't have to. So maybe just a good, I think the school district and this, maybe even the city, a lot of people have posted about the do's and don'ts of school bus and when to pass, well, not pass, but the do's and don'ts. So a good refresher as we're now in September. Just one, well, I guess two other things. I just wanted to mention at Lakes High School, they got a new electronic cadaver table. That's probably not the correct scientific term. However, I had the opportunity to go and actually look at it. Now, honestly, when I was invited to look at cadavers, I wasn't really excited. I wasn't sure. I thought it was actually going to be an animal. Still wasn't excited, but I went. And wow, it is amazing. It is the latest and greatest technology, and there's four human cadavers on it. They donated their bodies to science, and it's not as morbid as you, as it sounds because it, it, they do kind of look slightly computerized. But their, their entire, like, I don't know, I don't even, I'm not a scientist, but there, you can remove layers from their body, their cause of death is on there. You can see everything you know, about who they are. Honestly, it's fascinating. There's animals on there. We were there probably for an hour, and we barely scraped the surve, surface. The students are going to learn so much, and I can tell you, the skeletons that are there identifying the bones will not, they'll get dusty. They'll be a good decoration, but this table is just amazing, and I'm so glad that our students are able to learn from this, and I, and they'll even have the opportunity to go and compete. There's quizzes on it, and you can go as a team and compete. And so everyone is very excited. I know the teams are really champion for this. Obviously, it was not inexpensive. And I also just wanted to remind everyone that this year we will be on the road to COVID recovery, and I do think that people kind of might get annoyed by hearing that by now, but the national stats just came out and, you know, they proved what everyone already knew, that test scores were down among students across the country. So everyone in the country has a lot to work, of catch-up work to do, and the Clover Park School District is no, no different, but superintendent banner's theme is rise and thrive and pretty much no excuses. And so everyone's ready to go this year. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Well, thank you for the report. Any questions? Ms. Pearson, thank you very much for coming tonight, and it would be fun, actually, to go check out the science work over there. It sounds like a great contribution and investment. So that's great.
Really cool. All right. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. We now turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. I've been handed the, the various sign-in sheets. I want to make sure folks are aware that there are two public hearings tonight. The first is scheduled for the second biennial review of the Downtown Subarea Plan, A CIPA Planned Action and Development Code. And if that wasn't exciting enough, we have a second public hearing on the tree preservation code updates, and that likely is what most people are here for. If you are here for comment on either one of those two public hearing topics, I would encourage you to reserve your comment for the public hearing because if you give your comment that you intended to be in those two topic areas during the general public comment section of tonight's agenda, it won't make it into the record, the public record for purposes of the public hearing and the council's deliberation on your comments. So not that we don't hear everything, but I just want to let you be aware. So this section is the general public comment period. As you are aware, comments are accepted by mail, email, or can be presented by live virtual in-person comment. Those comments that have been sent in advance by mail to the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, can be sent, of course, by mail or via email at b schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance, not for those on the public hearing side, but just for the general public comment period, if you were able to distinguish those.
Mayor, we received no general public comments this evening. We did receive seventy-five public testimony for the tree preservation public hearing, but as it relates to general public comments, we received none in advance.
Okay, very good. And the seventy-five received for the tree preservation portion of the hearing tonight, those will be in the record for purposes of that public hearing.
Correct.
Very good. So members of the audience may comment on any item related to matters pertaining to city business under this public comment period. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes per person. We do ask that folks, when you approach the podium, please state your name and address of record so we can keep a clear record, both for the general public comment portion as well as the public hearing portion. Virtual comments are also available as indicated. If you'd like to provide live or virtual public comment, please note the information on the screen. You can dial in by telephone number as indicated and end of the meeting ID number. Please use the raise your hand feature and I will call on you to speak. So we try to mix it up and one week we'll call on those who are here first and then followed by those who are appearing virtually and then vice versa. But tonight I'm going to call first on those who are in person who have signed in to speak. Okay, again, the general sign in sheet has the topic or agenda. So if I see that you're down for an item subject to the public hearing, I'll state your name, but indicate if you're for the public hearing, we'll defer to that period. So Kate Reed and Mark Pfeiffer, you're here, but I assume for the tree preservation hearing. Ms. Escobedo is here for tree preservation hearing. Ms. Wagner, same. Derek Faust, the same. Mr. Lawrence Cleveland, the same. Yes, sir. Oh, you're absolutely welcome to do so, but you're down here. It says trees. Absolutely. If you'd like to, please approach. Yep. And that's why I go through this process, just to make sure I don't miss anyone.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo and I live on Lushai Road Southwest, Lakewood, Washington. So what I want to talk about today is listening about the school district. I want to know whether or not you guys are actually going to choose to give the give the chance to students to actually have the parents say that those children will be held back. Because with this program that we have right now, no child left behind. Children are getting left behind. And it's due to COVID. So I want to know, I personally would like to keep my children a grade behind. But that's not really a choice given to us as parents. So I would like to say that that needs to happen and let it be a choice for the parents, not for the school board. The other thing I would like to say is that it's amazing that you are recognizing Hispanics and Latinos in our community. But the thing that I didn't find respectful is that you're having at the Colonial Plaza. And I don't find that respectful at all to me as a Latina woman in Lakewood. Another thing I want to talk about is with the youth summit and with the youth that are part of the council, how do they find the students that are part of that? My daughter signed up last year. They didn't reach back to her and anything to be on that summit. The other thing I want to know is the percent of teachers that were hired, what are the demographics for those teachers? Another thing I want to talk about, of course, is the trees. We need to save as many trees as possible. And for the, I want to comment about the library committee. And for me, I think it's really important to get, keep the funding from that building for only Lakewood. I think that's like important not to, for all of Pierce County. Because if I understand it, Pierce County is going to get that funding from the building. It's not just Lakewood. And in the documentation, it says that all that funding is for Lakewood. It is not for Pierce County. Another thing is I want you all to understand that the library and Silicon has C Mar in it, has a food bank in it, has a senior space where people actually go have lunches there. So that needs to be implemented or talk to you about that also. The other thing I want to talk about is the lights that are being supposed to be put up in Lakewood. My neighborhood has been pitch black for I think a year and a half already. And it is scary to be in the neighborhood, scary at night. So I would like you guys to reach out into that and see what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person, James Dunlop has signed up for general public comment. Mr. Dunlop.
Right. Okay. My name is James Dunlop and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on public comments. The last public comments of an IOX suggested that people living outside the area shouldn't make public comments. I disagree. Former resident Dennis Hoigen has made public comments for decades. And unlike so many people in America, he is not afraid to express his opinion. Mr. Hoigen often comments on the dreadful state of mathematics education. And I want to give an example of this. Panatoni is about to build a warehouse on one hundred and twenty-third street. This property may be contaminated with PFAS because of its proximity to JBLM. But there are no public records of any testing. Well, if there are, Arthur West might have something to say about that. We should therefore assume to be on the safe side, that there is PFAS on the property. For example, in the groundwater. The city claims this isn't a problem because the only way PFAS will be spread is if there is a major flooding event. At first, this was supposed to happen every five hundred years. Now it's every hundred years. Which brings us on to math. My favorite equation is P equals one minus log natural to the power of minus lambda T, where P is probability, lambda is a mean chance of an event happening in one year and T is time. It seems the city has a mathematical deficit. Otherwise, they wouldn't be so nonchalant about the Panatoni development. If you make P fifty percent, you can work out how many years will elapse before there is a fifty percent chance of a major flood. Five hundred years is reassuring. You would have to wait three hundred and forty-seven years. The latest hundred year estimate puts it at sixty-nine years. So there's a good chance that only your grandchildren will be poisoned. However, that a hundred years is probably already out of date, given the dynamic nature of climate change. A major flood every twenty years is more realistic. Taking twenty years, that means that in the next fourteen years, there is a fifty percent chance of a major flood, which could be a major poisoning event in Lakewood. That's unacceptable. Did you think about that when welcoming Panatoni to Lakewood? Did your mathematics and science education let you down? Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next is Christina Manetti, and I might ask all folks if you can make sure that the mic is adjusted because it was really hard to hear the last two speakers for some reason. So it might just need to be closer to your mouth.
Testing, testing.
That's better. Thank you.
Christina Manetti, I'm a Lakewood resident since nineteen seventy-two. Of course, I want all of you to make sure that all of you know what happened. The appeal that we've been waiting for, for a year, it's been dismissed. The city announced it was a twenty-one day period for the appeal notice. I submitted it within the twenty-one days and it actually was twenty, fourteen days. I told the city that it was supposed to be fourteen days. Will they, will they correct it and have another appeal period, which would be the reasonable thing to do? I was ignored. So it was dismissed for two procedural reasons. There's going to be a warehouse there on nine acres. The groundwater is six feet down. I think I mentioned this before. There are one hundred and fourteen Gary Oaks there. It's on a one hundred year flood plain. These are, there's a critical area of flood plain, critical area of the Gary Oaks, and they can cut everything down for four hundred seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. So did you hear the news from Rhode Island today? Did you read the newspaper? This is why we have to heed the flood maps that the City of Lakewood commissioned that were published this spring and respect the flood plain, flood plain, flood plain in Springbrook. This means not paving over nine acres for a warehouse on one twenty-third street. Perhaps you saw the news, Rhode Island streets turned to rivers amid nearly eleven inches of rain. Drought busting heavy rain, people trapped in cars. They had to climb out onto the like the median or whatever and dormitories at my college at Brown University were flooded. Like when I was there, like who would think? Dormitories on the, like, how could, how's that happening? So people say they've never seen I five flood at Bridgeport, never saw flooding of the magnitude shown on the new maps. Yet all over the world, people are seeing flooding, the likes of which they have never seen before. Recall the floods in Germany last year. Did you see like entire like mountainsides, hillsides, you know, dirt, like everywhere, little houses? Did you see that? Look at the floods in Rhode Island. Eleven inches of rain in one day. Who would have thought it possible? Yet these are things are happening. Please prevent the nine acre property on one twenty-third street in Springbrook on a hundred year flood plain, where the water is just six feet below the surface and places from being paved over. On the maps, the depth of the floodwaters are in the near vicinity, reaching ten to twelve feet on the maps that you commissioned. This is with one hundred and fourteen Gary Oaks still in place. Without the invaluable infiltration that the centuries old old Oaks provide, the flooding will be even worse, of course. So please act now to prevent the shocking environmental devastation that the warehouse in Springbrook would cause. It is paving over our aquifer, our aquifer recharge zone, our water source. What good is cheap water today? That's why they say they're allowing to sell, sell the water to Pialp and Spanaway. If we don't have enough for tomorrow, I am shocked that my city would allow such a thing to be contemplated, much less carried out. Please act now to prevent this tragic destruction on so many levels, which cannot be undone.
Next is Mr. Christopher. Mr. Christopher Escobedo. Madam Clerk, you've got our clock working, correct?
Good evening. Whoa. Thanks for having me, Mayor and fellow council members. Today, I mean, so many things to talk about, but you know, I've always kept talking about we still don't have a community center for our children, you know? We have the Boys and Girls Club, but we have thirteen thousand kids. I've already told you. And I don't see anything happening at all. And it's, it's pretty sad. When it comes to the, the youth council, I kind of feel it's like, it's almost like a European perception only. So we decided to create our own youth council with children of color. Just to let you know, I'm, I'm the president of LULAC, the largest civil rights Latino organization in the country. And we have a LULAC youth. So we're really going to, you know, make them part of this and get our perceptions of, of things, you know? And what else? Y'all fixing to have a, a festival, I guess, on the seventeenth. Well, what you're not celebrating and everybody else is celebrating across the country is Fiesta Spatias. And that is a celebration of when the Native Americans revolution against the European powers. We defeated the European powers from the, you know, all the way down to South America, all the way up to our southern border. And that's what we're celebrating on the seventeenth. Of course, you didn't know. Latinos, the word Latinos means Latin people from Latin America. That means, you know, below our southern border. Hispanics, what that means, which y'all are celebrating, that means people from Spain. And very few people claim to be Hispanics, just to let you know. Well, we are, what I am is a Chicano. And a Chicano means, well, all of them, they're all, they're all cultures, right? They're all heritages. But what their race is, each one of them is going to be Native American. Each one of them, Native American is their race. So like I said, the Chicano means this is our motherland. The United States is where we're from. When Mexico defeated Spain, all of this became Mexico, all the way up to up here to Washington State. Maybe y'all never heard of that, but it's going to be the first time you hear it. This was Mexico. So welcome to, you know, to our motherland, you know? We appreciate all the good people here, all the anti-racist people here, of course. And we look forward to working together to building the first anti-racist equal for all for the first time in history, city and then country. Thank you, City of Lakewood.
Thank you. Next on the sign in sheet, Casey Brooke. Ma'am, if you'd like to have your comments in the public record for the public hearing on the tree preservation code, I'd suggest you wait. But very good. Those are the only individuals on the sign in sheet to address counsel during the generic public comment period, but you're welcome to do so if you haven't signed in. Uh, yes, Mr. Pfeiffer, Mark Pfeiffer. Although there wasn't a circled mark, yes or no, it was just a name. So that's why I skipped you. Sorry about that.
Mark Pfeiffer, resident of Lake City neighborhood. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Councilmembers. Short, brief, it's about the library. I, I really think that Lakewood should get out of the Pierce County library system. We have a lot of property tax money, three and a half percent of our property taxes go to the library system. The city only gets seven point one. So that three and a half percent, I know from, from my tax bill on my property, that, that's a lot of money. So I think we need to get out of it. We could still have interlocal agreements where books can be, you know, borrowed back and forth. But you know, the, the library system, the, the, the board is appointed by the county executive. It's not an elective position like, like the school board is or like this body is. So that's, that's what I wanted to say about that today. Be back later.
Thank you, sir. Again, that's the last name on the sign in sheet, but that doesn't preclude you if you have desire to speak to the council during the general public comment period. So is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am. I can certainly have one of us address it in the inner meeting time when we take a little bit of a break, but we don't usually have a back and forth question and answer, but we happy, be happy to address the question if you catch us just a little bit later. Any others here who want to address the council during the public comment period? If not, I will have the clerk take us over to the virtual list of folks who wish to address counsel during the public comment period, and I will first call on Pepper Lazzowski. I'm sorry. Okay. Any of those of you who are
Hi, sorry.
If you're here, Ms. Lazzowski for the public hearing on the trees, I'll encourage you to wait until the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. Unless you have more generic comments to address to counsel. Same with Mr. Tukamir Dunlop, I presume for the public hearing. So then the only other person with the hand up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, formerly of Lakewood. In regard to some previous comments about the possibility of you dying from a fraud, but it's far more likely that you will die from fentanyl. Fentanyl poisoning and other kinds of drug poisoning and all. And as well as the crime that's brought from the drug trade across the border. You're more likely to die from that than anything else right now. And of course, the entire country, the sanctuaries, states and cities and the, and the non-sanctuary cities. The non-sanctuary areas are very angry, as you can, as you may be aware, with the sanctuary states. with the sanctuary states. So, with all of the flood of criminals coming across the border, uh, Governor Abbott and Governor in Arizona are starting to send busloads of people that gotta prove with an easy, you know, vetting, uh, coming across the border and dropping them off at, uh, capital and the capital of cities. This is making the, uh, it's sort of blowing the cover for the, the mayors of all of these, uh, sanctuary states and cities, or cities. And they're getting very angry, and they're actually, uh, you know, we've all been wondering, where are these people going? Who's paying for the housing? What effect is the housing, the government-paid housing having on the market? And it's most likely raising the cost of rent, so some of your legal citizens are sitting right there in Lakewood, uh, are finding that rents are increasing, and, uh, they can hardly afford the rent anymore, so, uh, you know, you got a lot to clean up, and, and, and because you are, uh, you are operating under an illegal sort of an umbrella. I realize it's brought on by the President of the United States, who offered a blanket invitation to the whole world without, uh, any kind of mathematical analysis as to whether you can handle it. But, who votes for this kind of stuff? Who votes for, uh, the kind of people that do this, that, uh, create sanctuary states? Well, and, you know, our forefather says you gotta be informed and educated in order to make this democracy work. Well, now we have CRT, uh, being claimed, uh, as taking the schools' uh, time and effort rather than teaching the plain old three Rs. So, you kind of brought it all on yourself, but don't be surprised if buses start rolling in, and then you'll have to figure out what you're gonna do on an open basis rather than, uh, what's being hidden and underground.
Thank you. Next, uh, again, Ms. Lizowski, your hand is up. If you wish to address the tree preservation, public hearing portion of tonight's agenda, I suggest you wait, but it's up to you.
Sorry, I didn't realize my hand was still up.
Okay. Tukamir Dunlop, uh, same question to you. If you'd like to wait for the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda on the tree preservation code, that would be the time to speak.
Hello, uh, I, I wanted to say something else for the, hmm, for the hearing portion, but I was gonna say something else now as well. Okay.
This is, this is a general public comment period, so go for it, unless you want your comments related to the tree preservation code.
So, uh, hello, my name is Tukamir Dunlop, and I just wanted to make a quick statement before the public hearing about, um, private property rights and what you can do on your own property. And it's kind of, uh, of vital importance to the current kind of conversation about, um, when or whether or not, um, cutting down trees should be permitted. So, obviously, the argument that's saying that whatever you can do on your own property, like, no matter what you do on your own property, you should be able to do it because it's your own property, it sounds reasonable. But the issue with it is that there's a line where, across that line, if you're negatively affecting other people, you shouldn't be able to have, um, unrestricted rights over what you do over your own property. So, the way that affects trees is that if you cut down a tree, you are not only harming yourself, but you're, um, depriving your neighbors and your community and future people who potentially haven't even been born yet from, um, enjoying the benefits of that tree, the carbon sequestration, the shade, the, the heat absorption, uh, the lack of heat islands, you know, all of these benefits of trees. Um, and it's the same reason why you can't, um, I don't know, burn toxic chemicals on your property because that is hurting other people, obviously that is legal. So, I, I think, uh, cutting down trees goes into a similar category because you're not gonna own your own property forever. There's gonna be a day when somebody else owns it. Trees not only affect yourself, but other people as well. So, I think, um, the idea that because of private property rights, one can cut down whatever one wants, that is inherently false, and it's, yeah, it's wrong. So, that's all I wanted to say, and I was gonna say something else for the, um, uh, public hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next individual. Next individual with their hand up is, uh, Mr. Bunchy Carter.
Hey, I can hear you.
Yes.
Cool. Well, as he just said, my name is Bunchy Carter, I'm Mr. Defense of the Black Panther Party. Um, I probably won't even use the whole three minutes. I really just wanted to, I wasn't even gonna make a comment today. I was just listening, looking for some inspiration. And our friend from Sioux Falls gives us every single time, without failure. Sir, I want you to know something, in case nobody told you, you're a racist, and I'll tell you why. The crimes that are occurring in these cities that you're speaking of have nothing to do with illegal immigration. They have nothing to do with people being homeless. They have nothing to do with people being incapable of the three Rs, as you call them, even though arithmetic starts with an A, but we won't get into that. What it really has to do with is poverty. You wanna talk about that? Poverty created more drug kingpins than crack ever did. You know why? Because when you feel that there's no way out, you will take the first escape hatch that's handed to you. And that's what we see in now. People feel like their backs are against the wall. The pandemic did far more harm to people than we, uh, than, that has become, uh, evident to us immediately. Look at the children who returned back to school buildings and how they behaved. I guarantee you, if you do the numbers, there was a lot more irrational behavior since the pandemic ended and they went back to school buildings because they spent an entire year plus separated from other humans, communicating over a computer, and even through Zoom, it's not the same as having a conversation. Critical race theory is not keeping people from learning the three Rs, as you say. It's basic through American history. And if you don't, I can't figure out for the life of me if people's problem with CRT is, if you don't know this past, you're doing the repeated, or don't tell them the past so we can do it and they won't know it's repeating. That's all, man, justice for Said Joaquin, all power to the people.
Next is Mr. Otto Equitas.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, speak up as, as best you can.
Okay, um, I apologize for not being there in person. Um, I'm actually just pulling up in the parking lot. I was trying to be there for public comment, but as usual, we have some, you know, activity going on in the streets that required our attention. Um, but I'll be in there for the tree thing, don't worry. Um, I'd like to start with an apology. Last week, I lost my temper, and that doesn't happen often. I'm usually fairly level-headed. But the notion of community members having to come in and beg for assistance was just too much for me to take that day. So, to the people of Lakewood, I'm sorry you had to see that. I apologize, and I will do better because the city deserves better. But the notion is still there. Since that meeting, I made a couple promises myself. I said that we were going to go out there and help the village keep their area safe. We've been out there four or five nights a week for the past few weeks, and not once have we seen a cop. Obviously, we ain't out there twenty-four-seven, I understand that. We've seen tow trucks, though. So, it seems like the great plan to fix this situation was, okay, let's just tow the houseless community away from there, and maybe that'll fix the problem. Instead, I gave them cards and said, hey, if you guys see something, give us a call because they're out there, they got their eyes on the streets. Those are the best possible eyes you can have. So, we get the calls, and we go out there. We rely on the people because the people are what keeps the city strong. The people will never have to ask us for help. We're just gonna be there. And hopefully, Mike Zarro, if you're still there, hopefully you're listening, maybe you should try and do the same. And if you do end up out there, keep your gun in your holster. All power to the people.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Sarah Farmicus.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'll keep it short because I have more to say about the trees, but I'll save that for later. Um, you know, I wanna start by, by echoing, um, some of the sentiments that have been voiced earlier, which is that, you know, you're setting up a cultural center for Lakewood, and you're building it around Colonial Plaza. And, and I mean, not even thinking about, you know, maybe changing the name, like, are we still, you know, in, in, in 2022 pretending that we don't understand history to the point that we don't understand how the idea of glorifying colonialism or putting that at the center of our cultural center, right? I mean, explicitly glorifying a culture of colonialism. Are we still pretending that we don't understand history so badly that we don't understand why that's offensive and traumatizing to certain individuals, to many individuals? That's the first thing. Um, to, uh, to respond to some other comments I heard, I just wanna say, first off, um, Mr. Hogan, you know, you wanna sit there and say that the thing that's most likely to kill you is fentanyl and the drug trade? Well, I, I mean, I, I side of source, side of source, because I would love to see those numbers. I would love to see those numbers that you've, uh, discovered that, that show that the number one cause of death in Lakewood right now is fentanyl. Go ahead, no, no, show him. Right? And as far as the CRT goes, critical race theory, like actual critical race theory, is a college-level course. It's not something anybody's teaching kids because it's a, it's a, uh, it's an in-depth college-level course that kids wouldn't understand, right? You, you don't teach, I mean, you have to go through, it's not even a one hundred level course. Okay, but if you're, what you're talking about is like, um, actual history of oppression and like a material analysis, a materialist historical analysis, a dialectical analysis? You know, I mean, that needs to be taught. And, and, you know, you might think we're already teaching it, but not to the degree we need to be, and you just wait until we do. Because the kids are gonna be all right then, you know, to, to, uh, reiterate, um, what Mr. Escobedo said, you know, we will create, um, a truly egalitarian city and a truly egalitarian country. Uh, we will abolish private property, um, we will abolish imperialism, um. All power to the people, justice for Said Joaquin.
That is the last, uh, individual with the hand raised. So, there's one more, it appears, Michelle Ryder. And again, even though I call on the names, please state your name and your residence address so that the clerk can make sure she has a complete record.
Hold on, my name is Michelle Ryder, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I live at seven zero nine Wilson Street, Southeast Wilson Street in Olympia.
Yes, Ms. Ryder, this is your time if you want a generic public comment as opposed to the tree code.
About the Gary Oaks, but I had a family emergency, so I have very limited time. So, could I share it? It's about the Gary Oaks, and it ties into the tree, um, the tree, uh, recommendations.
If you wish for your comments to be included in the formal public record for the tree preservation code updates, I would encourage you to wait until that portion of tonight's agenda.
Do you know how long it'll be until we reach that point?
Uh, I would say... I would say no more than fifteen minutes, depending if we have any more folks with hands raised.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any others, uh, other than Ms. Ryder, uh, that wish to address the general public comment portion of tonight's agenda that I have not called on? If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda, but those who are here for the two public hearings, you'll be right after the consent agenda. We shouldn't take any more than five minutes, so stand by. Public comment is hereby closed. Madam Clerk, consent agenda, please.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of August eighth, twenty twenty-two. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents for the period of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two through August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-three cents for the period of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. F, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-two, authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement adopting amendments updating the Pierce County countywide planning policies. G, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-three, authorizing the execution of an agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc. in the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for design engineering services related to the Ardmore-Wittman Ninety-third Street sidewalks project. H, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-four, authorizing the execution of agreements and forms related to the Washington opioid settlement. I, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-five, authorizing the execution of abatement contracts with Northwest Abatement Services for demolition of nine-six-one-six Gravely Lake Drive Southwest. J, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-six, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Global IT Resources for updates to the rental housing safety program software. K, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-seven, authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with John J. Caulfield for City Manager Services. L, motion number twenty twenty-two dash sixty-eight, appointing DJ Wilkins to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. M, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of June first, twenty twenty-two. Two, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Three, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any member wishes to remove at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. We adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted as presented. We now turn to our regular agenda. First item up is public hearings and appeals, and I'll have the clerk read the first item, but I just wanna let the audience know, we will take a brief five-minute break between the two public hearings, so we can get assembled. Those who are here for the first one can leave if you don't wanna be for the second one. Those who are here for the second one can be ready to go. So, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the second biennial review of the downtown subarea plan, SEPA Plan, Action, and Development Code.
Thank you very much, and to give us an overview, I'll call on our planning manager Tiffany Spear, who will join us virtually and give us a bit of context.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. My apologies, it looks like my, um... I'm sorry. You can look at the wall behind my computer, my apologies. I'll share my screen in just a second. All right, so very quickly, um, as was discussed several meetings ago, the, uh, annual or biannual review of the downtown subarea plan is underway. The council held a study session about this several weeks ago. The council held a study session about this several weeks ago, and tonight is a public hearing on recommended, uh, changes to the process by which it is reviewed, uh, as recommended by the Planning Commission. So there were two ordinances, 695 and 696, that established in every two-year cycle to review the plan, the planned action ordinance related to it, and the development regulations contained in Title 18B. What has occurred is that after review of the, um, activity that's occurred within the subarea, the contaminated, um, property status, the, uh, process by which transportation mitigation fees are collected, um, all of those things were reviewed by the Planning Commission. No substantive changes were recommended by the Planning Commission. However, there are some changes recommended in terms of the frequency of future reviews. So as you see there in the second half of this slide, there's three, um, subsections talking about changing essentially a two-year process to a five-year process in order to, uh, incorporate this downtown subarea review in future, uh, years to be part of the comprehensive plan review. Subareas are part of the comprehensive plan. However, if things that need to be addressed in a shorter timeframe do arise, then that cycle, it can be incorporated into the annual comprehensive plan development regulation and fee amendment cycles. So there are several amendments that are in the packet, which, uh, includes this information starting on page 376. But you'll see here on the screen, just recognizing the change to a five-year review uh, within the ordinance 696, the similar language is, uh, included for the planned action ordinance. And so assuming that the council is ready to move on to consider, uh, action on this, it will be before you again on September 19th. But otherwise, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Ms. Spear before we open this for the public hearing on this action item or topic, I should say? Thank you, Ms. Spear.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. As indicated by the city clerk, this is the date set for the public hearing on the second biennial review of the downtown subarea plan, the CIPA Planned Action and Development Code. Public testimony on this, uh, hearing concept and topic will be accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Uh, testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to Ms. Schumacher via her email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically and will be included in the record for this public hearing. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received no comments in advance for this public hearing.
Very well. Testimony on this matter is now limited to three minutes per person. Again, similar to the general public comment period. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, you certainly may via telephone, as indicated on the screen, uh, or virtually through the Zoom process with the meeting ID number indicated, pressing the star nine to raise your virtual hand to be called upon. I don't have a sheet that indicates anyone here in the audience has signed in to testify on this very exciting, uh, topic. So if I missed you and your name somewhere, you are more than welcome to certainly approach us here at the podium and, uh, present, uh, your, your public comment. Uh, so seeing none, I will ask if there are any folks who are appearing virtually or by telephone who wish to testify during this public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you see anyone?
Mayor, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Are there any other individuals who wish to address the council during the public hearing on the second biennial review of the downtown subarea plan, the CIPA Planned Action and Development Code? Any others who wish to address the council during this public hearing? I see Ms. Escobedo approaching the podium.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You may. Please state your name and your address for the public record on this hearing.
My name is Amelia Escobedo. My address is eight zero one one Lishy Road Southwest, Lakewood, Washington. So my questions for this is have the plans gone through, I guess, to make it more green? Has that happened? So breaking down, how are you going to make these changes? The other one is the Lakewood workers that get to work on this sub-area plan. Uh, what are the demographics of those workers? Cause most of the workers I see working in the city are white workers. I don't really see people of color out there working, um, the city, city jobs around Lakewood. The other thing that I would say is, what input have you gotten from the people about this? And why isn't this shared in more places? Because I don't hear a lot about this only from the Lakewood website. That's it. Or if I come to here, besides that, I don't hear anything about this. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals, again, going once, going twice, three times? Any other individuals who wish to address the council during this public hearing process on this particular topic? Yes, ma'am. I see your hand raised. Really fast comments still deserve a name and an address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Bruner, and I live at 8512 Nixon Avenue, Lakewood. And my question, just listening off the cuff, is there's a big difference between two years and five years? And I don't, I think that a whole lot can happen in five years that maybe should be better taken care of. I could see three, but I think five is a bit much.
Thank you very much. That is, that's exactly the kind of comment we're looking for in this public hearing. Thank you for that. Any others, uh, in the audience who wish to address the council during the public hearing on this particular topic? The downtown subarea plan, CIPA Planned Action and Development Code. And just for the, the public certification, this is a subarea planning exercise and document that happened a few years ago. Uh, there was very significant public process and a consultant facilitating that process uh, for a long period of time before the council ultimately adopted it. And so this is the time where we're discussing, as, uh, the last commenter just indicated, the timing for review of that subarea planning process and documentation. Any others who wish to address the council during this hearing? If not, I'll consider the public hearing on the biennial review of the downtown subarea plan closed. I indicated we might have a break, but we may not need it. We might want to just kind of power through if everyone is looking good and doesn't need a stretch break. So we'll turn Madam Clerk to the next public hearing on the tree preservation code.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the tree preservation code updates.
Thank you very much. And for this, I'm going to, again, uh, count on or call on one of our staff members to provide us with an overview. And tonight I'm asking Planning Manager Courtney Brunel to give us an overview prior to the hearing on the tree preservation code updates.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is the date set for the public hearing for the tree preservation code update, which begins on page 565 of your council packet. For a quick legislative summary, this update began in late 2021, in early 2022, when the, when the city council formed an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee met throughout the first quarter of 2022 and forwarded recommendations to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission reviewed the recommendations, held a public hearing, and via Resolution 2022 dash zero seven, forwarded its recommendations onto the city council. To summarize, the Planning Commission recommendations include adopting a 30% tree canopy goal, the formation of a heritage tree program, which would be a new landmark designation reviewed by the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board, similar to any other Lakewood landmark, maintaining the existing 17,000 square foot residential lot exemption for all trees except Oregon white oaks, removing the industrially zoned property exemption and reestablishing preservation criteria for industrial zones similar to those that existed prior to 2020, establishing an administrative tree removal permit process that would not require a tree retention plan to simplify permitting for residential property owners, reducing the size of a significant Gary Oak tree from six inches to four inches, establishing additional protections for Oregon white oak trees, including a permit for the removal of any significant Oregon white oak and a standard two-to-one replacement ratio for any significant oak requiring removal, redefining trimming and pruning to protect the existing canopy, establishing incentives to encourage tree retention and preservation, creating a more predictable permitting in a critical areas ordinance via an administrative reasonable use exception, and to add enforcement procedures, including civil infractions and triple fees for malicious cutting of property owners or issued to property owners and contractors individually. I would also like to clarify that the city does require a city license prior to approving any required tree removal permit today. Given the recommended code amendments, our department would also verify that arborists are properly licensed and certified. This is already a common practice for our department for all contractors and design professionals. In addition, the council has requested amendments to preserve trees on single-family residential lots following a short subdivision, to create more options for tree replacement based on tree diameter, carbon sequestration, and canopy coverage, and to provide clearer definitions for a tree stand. A comprehensive list of the proposed code amendments, including the ad hoc committee recommendations, Planning Commission recommendations, and other options or updates posed by, requested by the city council are found on pages one, or sorry, table one through three, on pages 566 through 571 of the revised agenda packet. This public hearing was advertised in compliance with the municipal code. The advertisement referenced the code revisions found in the August 8th city council packet, which included all of those proposed revisions, except those requested by the council recently. All of the city council amendments were posted online prior to the public hearing in the August 22nd and September 6th city council packets. This concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brunel. Uh, before we start the public hearing, are there any questions of members of the council of Ms. Brunel that might, uh, illuminate the information presented? Any questions of Ms. Brunel at this time? Great. If not, ma'am, I appreciate you have a question, but I have to.
Sure. Yep. The Planning Commission recommendation was to establish a 30% tree canopy.
Yep. So that, that's the overview, but I, thank you. I just wanted to give very little leniency on that. Thank you, Ms. Brunel. So if there are no other questions of council to Ms. Brunel, oh, Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Brunel, and since Lakewood's incorporation, what has happened with respect to the tree canopy in Lakewood? Given that Lakewood was originally a prairie, uh, has the tree canopy increased or decreased?
We have found that since City of Lakewood's incorporation through this process, um, with data confirmed by Planet Geo, one of the consultants hired to assist the city with this tree preservation code update, that we have seen a slight increase in our overall tree canopy in all zones, with the exception of our public right-of-ways, and a slight increase in the overall tree canopy citywide.
Which is about 50 acres. Is that correct?
I will have to confirm that, um, that exact number, council member.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions. Again, from the planning perspective, uh, we have gone through, and I think tonight, on the consent agenda, we adopted countywide planning policies, uh, adopted by Pierce County. They came through the Pierce County Regional Council. Uh, can you, uh, describe for us what the population and housing targets that Lakewood now must plan for by 2044?
Not at this moment, but I would be happy to follow up with you.
Right, but it's significant.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other questions of council? If not, this is the time for the public hearing on the amendments to the proposed tree preservation code updates. Public hearing and public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, the city clerk, at the city's address at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically and shall be included in the public record. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Uh, Mayor, we received 75 comments in advance. I apologize for any names I, uh, pronounce incorrectly. The comments have been received from Tacoma Audubon, Joan Anderson, Julie Anderswitz, Stephen Bakar, Catherine Castleberry, Jody Cook, Bunchy Carter, James Dunlop, Tishamir Dunlop, Christopher Escobedo, Nakeen Fernandez, Claudia Finseth, Dave Iverson, Melissa Knott, Carlo Manetti, Christina Manetti, Judith Manetti, Sean Martin, Julie Miller, Ben Olson, Christine Piat, Christine Ridge, Michelle Ryder, Colleen Smart, Kimberly Smart, Ovanawa X, Jeff Brown, Edward Shafie, Yanae Cook, Vivian DeZweiger, Ross Strangsholt, Chris Fionby, Russ Gibson, Phyllis Griggs, James Guerrero, Dagmar Ivanik, Melissa Jackson, Brett Jacobson, Ally Orsico, Tricia Parsons, Docier Farmicus, Heidi Stevens, Wendy Zitt, Jennifer Adams, Ado Equitas, Tam Beal, Philippa Blythe, William Bergen, Cynthia Carmichael, Byron Kruger, Kimberly Kruger, Casey Crook, Esther Day, Todd Dickens, Karen Drum, Carol Eckert, Aja Fulani, Winfield Giddings, Phil Hardy, Joan Jackson, Kay Wan Huang, Jenna Lee, Rachel Mackey, Matthew McCarthy, Christine Moody, Cheryl Murray, Tommy Oakley, Catherine Parks, Gail Scar, Jenny Smith, Janet Spingath, Victoria Stanich, Sue Stib, Cecilia and Rob Warren, and finally, Colleen Waterhouse.
Thank you very much. And the reason we do that is to ensure that those of you who have submitted public comments in writing to us know that those comments will be included as part of our public record, and we will certainly get the opportunity to review all of those uh, before our further deliberations. And we're going to have a study session on this before we consider taking action. So I just put it out there, if you've made very thorough, as I assume those who've submitted public comments have, very thorough comments to the council, since we're the decision makers, uh, you don't need to duplicate those, uh, in oral testimony tonight. If you would like to, you may. We don't have a formal council rule on that. So what I'm just telling you that if, uh, you've submitted them in writing, they will be reviewed. We will review them. And you need not duplicate your comments unless you would like to, which I will let you do. Our testimony will be limited tonight to three minutes per person, as was the case in the general public comment period. Again, if you would like to provide live virtual public testimony, you can join the Zoom meeting with the dial-in as indicated, or the meeting ID number reflected on the screen, pressing star nine to use the raise your hand feature, and I will call on you. I will first call on those who are physically here who have signed in to speak, assuming that they would wish to speak, even though they've submitted written comments. And then I will call on those uh, on Zoom as we did previously. I just have a couple of, of opening thoughts as we engage in this process together during the, the public hearing. Again, uh, please state your name and address of record so that we can keep a clear record. Uh, be cordial, uh, in your comments. We're all in this together to try to make good public policy as a community. It would be helpful for us to listen to those comments, especially that help distinguish between the recommendations. You heard in Ms. Brunel's overview that the TreeHawk Ad hoc Tree Committee made recommendations, and then the Planning Commission reviewed it and made some changes to the recommendations or their own recommendations. It would be very helpful to get comment distinguishing your thoughts on the recommendations. That is helpful to us for sure. And if I'm looking down and not looking at you when you're speaking, it's because I'm taking notes furiously. It's not that I'm not, uh, listening to you or ignoring you. I'm trying to take down uh, notes so I can recall, uh, everything of importance that comes to us, or at least to me, as through my, my hearing tonight. So those are kind of the overall thoughts here. Again, uh, please state your name for the record. And I will start with the listing of individuals signed in to speak tonight directly. Mr. Mark Pfeifer, you are number one on the sign-in sheet.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. Uh, I live at nine zero zero four Dolly Madison Street Southwest in the Lake City neighborhood. For some time, I've heard and read of handbringing over tree preservation, the effects on property rights, values, and development. Tree preservation concerns impact property values by restricting or other Tree preservation concerns impact property values by restricting or otherwise circumscribing what can be built and where. I believe everyone in the so called tree hugger camp is aware of such impacts. I also believe that as a group, they are open to reasonable accommodation. That is. They believe that there is a design development equilibrium that can be reached. But let us face facts. All land use zoning restrictions through municipal and state codes. Have economic consequences for property owners. They restrict uses in residential, industrial, core business, even SOB. Areas. And for good reason, I should add, without restating what should be obvious to everyone. I submit that tree preservation is just another property use restriction. With several similarly good reasons. I believe that the Ad Hoc Committee on Tree Preservation brought a reasoned, well balanced, equitable approach to its mandate. One recommendation I was specifically drawn to was that of tree canopy coverage or T C C. The committee recommended a forty percent T C C goal by year twenty thirty five. That is a lofty goal, unintended. Given the slow growth rate of all trees, but Gary Oaks in particular. Depending on soil type and other environmental factors, it takes from ten to twenty years for a Gary Oak seedling. To reach significant size of four inches. Diameter at breast height of four and a half feet. The Lakewood Planning Commission has recommended a goal of thirty percent. I choose to be charitable and give the commission the benefit of doubt. That is that its recommendation to reduce the T C C. Was based on the difficulty of reaching the forty percent goal. And not to maintain its credibility with the property development community. Difficulty in reaching a desirable goal should not be mitigated by reducing the goal. We see enough of that in our daily lives. That's it?
You have a few more seconds, Mr. Pfeifer, if you'd like.
As stated previously, the Ad Hoc Committee did a particularly excellent job, given the time constraint it was faced. Studying the issue which has suffered deferred policy maintenance for over twenty years was a tough task. Now finally, that is soon to change. However, the job does not end there. The city should double down on this. Soon to be accomplishment by establishing a tree preservation advisory board or committee. Thank you. You have copies.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, Kate Reed.
My name is Kate Reed. Mayor Whalen and Deputy Mayor Moss and council members. I live at nine zero zero four Dolly Madison Street Southwest in Lake City. The home of lakes and trees. I support the recommendations of all the ad hoc. Committee and the creation of an urban forestry division. Hire a certified arborist with practical knowledge and develop a list of suitable broadleaf and deciduous street trees for for Lakewood. For new developments where there are oak stands, planning should require developers to site buildings to maintain those stands. As a park light amenity for the residents. Lakewood needs a significant effort to maintain or increase the ad hocs recommendations of forty percent tree canopy by twenty thirty five. Decrease the shrubbery planted and plant more trees on a tighter. Distance with a goal of earning a tree city USA designation. Which would benefit Lakewood. There is a nursery in Salem, Oregon, a Mahonia Nursery. That sells rescued oak trees to which the Tacoma Country and Golf Club has purchased bald and burlap trees. As their replacement trees. So there is availability of trees if if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Celia Warren.
Good evening. I'm Celia Warren and I'm here representing myself and my husband, Rob Warren. We are residents of University Place, have lived at twenty one twenty two Bridgeport Way West since nineteen seventy four. In our own area, my husband and I organized. Between nineteenth and twenty seventh street when they wanted to widen the street. We attempted to prevent all the trees from being cut down. Unfortunately, something like a hundred. Mature dug firs. We saved an elm tree by working with with the city. The City of University Place worked with us. To save a mature elm tree. And we had a deal that if it be if it died within or if it lived for five years. Then if at some point it got diseased, we were responsible for removing it. But if during their construction, they had somehow ruined or damaged the roots. Then they would be responsible for removing their the tree. It was a really neat thing the University Place did for us. I'm here because. I'm just going to be disjointed because I'm not going to follow what I've written. In large part, I agree that there should be a forty percent canopy goal rather than thirty percent. Far too many trees have already been cut. It sounds like Councilman Anderson recognizes this used to be a prairie. The Gary Oaks were the trees that were in that prairie. If you look back into the history of them, that's why so many of them were so large and we don't want to cut them down. Mature trees, especially Gary Oaks, but also, well, anyway, especially Gary Oaks are far more drought tolerant and fire resistant than young trees. Planning young trees. It doesn't cut it. I mean. It's just too easy to just plant young trees and hope that they make it in the climate that we have now. It's a problem. Anyway, I think one way that the city could start is by preserving. All healthy, mature, non invasive trees that are on public property. That would have had implications for the recent cutting down of several mature such trees on Phillips Road. In order to put sidewalks in. It's the same thing that University Place did. When they wanted to cut down all those trees because they had some kind of a grant or grants and it was. There were requirements. So anyway. I just think that the city needs to be forward thinking. I think some of the recommendations by the planning commission. They put forward some good ideas, but I also think everything the Ad Hoc Committee has put out there. Is well thought out, well researched. And the carrot and stick approach to preserve trees on private land is a great idea. Thank you so much for letting me comment.
Thank you very much. You certainly welcome to clap, but you can always save it to the very end and we can have one big standing ovation for everyone if you want to do that. So. Next is Amelia Escobedo, please.
My name is Amelia Escobedo and I live at eight zero one one LaShay Road Southwest, Lakewood, Washington. For me, the forty percent sounds okay, but I think it should be higher than that. I mean, I think you should put it in your agenda or whatever to keep. Getting more trees and keep planting more trees and keep more trees. Like they said earlier. Where there is no trees, there's more water runoff and more water runoff causes floods. So that's a good reason. Another reason is the wildlife that's in the areas that trees are in. Lately, I have been seeing many animals, wild animals out in the streets. I saw a little duck crossing the road. So we're going into their property and their areas also. I saw a deer. Almost get hit. I mean, there's animals out there that need this forestry for themselves. I think it would be beautiful if you took away one of the golf courses and just planted trees, just all the way across it. Another thing is they said the. Exemptions for trees should be put in place, but also agree that. We can work around trees. You can build around trees. It's not that hard to do. We can do it. It's possible. It can be done. Like they said that they should do a two to one ratio for the organ white oak. I think it should be higher than that because trees to me mean a lot. That is life. Tree is life. Trees are life. So I would say maybe a four to one ratio. As far as saying what pruning pruning is, I think that's a great idea, given what is allowed to happen to the trees. And I think establishing and what is it called? Somebody that actually knows about tree arborist and hiring somebody like that to be. On the committee or to be part of the city council. Board. That would be awesome to have somebody like that, maybe even an environmentalist or something. The other thing I want to say is that. You have to realize and see that the poorer communities, the lower income communities are the ones that are with less trees. So something, a program needs to be done for those areas. What I have noticed too, like even in the dog parks, like you would think that there's shade, there is no shade out there. I think the most important thing is is to save our trees. This is Lakewood. So for our children, for everybody that lives in Lakewood, we should preserve it and we should lead the way. We should be the leaders. The other thing I want to say is that. Just looking at different areas like the Custer Elementary where they cut those trees down, they look naked. It was sad. And then putting pieces of wood that are already there. That you took from trees to put as light posts.
Thank you.
That was disgusting to me. Justice for Said Joquin.
Mr. Al Schmouter is next.
Members of the city council. My name is Al Schmouter. I live in Lake in Lacey, but I do a lot of volunteer work in Lakewood. Working with Mr. Brandstetter and others. And I'm not here to quibble about the different rules that we're going to talk about today. In fact, you should be commended for setting up as the Ad Hoc Committee. That's really a thoughtful process to kind of get everybody together. But as you can see, the recommendations need more work on how to implement them. Balancing tree protection and restoration with economic development. Is a never ending process. We know the trees improve air quality, sequester carbon, absorb and store stormwater and filter it. But trees get in the way of development. That's a basic fact. This building, for instance, sits on the original channel of Clover Creek. Clover Creek flowed right through here into the lake and the Ponce de Leon Creek. So if we had a rule, we wouldn't have like trees, we wouldn't have a city building today. Now, how the problem is how are you going to balance this mess? As a result, Lakewood needs a holistic approach that considers the needs of all the players. Unfortunately, this committee did a lot of good work, but I understand toward the end, some of the the members like the of the development committee and master builders. Fell off the boat. So you didn't get their input right at the end. They vote nine to zero. Who were those nine people? So, you know, I don't think we got really a fair result here. And there is no city long term management and development plan. I was told there's money in two tree accounts in the city. It's been sitting there for years and nobody has called to use it or has a plan to use the eighty thousand dollars sitting in one of these accounts. You have no, there's no impetus, no driver, no leader that want to make these things happen, see? So I would like to have you consider, please, a recommendation. That that you approve the best tree policy plan that you can at this time. With what you have to deal with, with your developers and planning commission and all that. But you're not done. You kicked a hornet's nest and that's a good deal. Because you have citizens involved. In addition, I'd like to see you set up a phase two. Sustainable urban forestry study for a potential revision in one year of the ordinance. Similar to our to our shoreline management plan, we come in every year, tell you what's going on. I think you should do the same thing with trees. This is never ending. Get a contract with experienced urban forestry and a planner to work with developers, master builders and citizens. To implement a tree plan. And come up with good, reliable. You need real incentives. Or we say recommendations, let's have incentives, but just talking about it doesn't work. And I think you could reduce property taxes for people with trees.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Next, Polly McLean. Yes, ma'am, just checking. All good. Thank you. Jody Lynn Polarski. Same thing. Welcome to the evening. Hope you're enjoying it. So. Lowell, it's hard to read Weiss. Lowell Weiss.
Good evening. My name is Lowell Weiss. I'm Executive Director of Tacoma Tree Foundation and we're headquartered in downtown Tacoma. Our mission is to educate, empower and support. Area residents and community based greening in order in order to grow the urban forest in Tacoma and the watersheds of Pierce County. I want to commend the City of Lakewood for undergoing this process and taking steps to preserve existing tree canopy. I also want to voice strong support for the recommendations presented by the Ad Hoc Committee. This is kind of a once in a generation opportunity. The frequency with which tree preservation ordinances get passed is really low. And so I think this is a great opportunity and I love the level of community feedback that you're seeing. But I want to put this in a broader context and just say that it's not just about Lakewood. This is about our whole region. And if we look at the way that Pierce County is developing, urbanized Pierce County is losing tree canopy very rapidly. And this is not just an environmental issue either. This is about people. Tree coverage is about people because the benefits of trees belong to everybody. And it shouldn't matter what zip code you live in, whether you have good air quality or you have shade in your neighborhood. Lakewood has what I would call an unfair forest. The benefits of trees here are not distributed equally. Trees are an environmental justice issue. Data from the nonprofit American Forests actually assessed Lakewood's tree canopy lower than twenty six percent at twenty one point eight percent. So there may be some leeway depending on which assessment practices are used. American Forests found that Lakewood census blocks with forty to one hundred percent people in poverty. Have six to nine percent less tree coverage than average. Census blocks in Lakewood with sixty to one hundred percent people of color have nine to twelve percent less tree coverage than average. And that translates into hotter neighborhoods for low income and communities of color. So I would say the tree preservation is the first step in expanding and strengthening the urban forests and you all have an important job to do here. I would support the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Committee and say. To aim for a more ambitious forty percent goal, to provide enforcement and incentives, celebrate heritage trees. Apply the preservation standards to industrial properties, removing that exemption. And also fund an urban forest division and urban forest management plan for how the city will achieve whichever tree canopy targets it adopts. Finally, this is an economic opportunity. Trees and economic development are not in conflict. If Lakewood were to increase its tree canopy to forty percent, American Forests found it would result in two point six million dollars in ecosystem services. And support eleven hundred jobs. So please keep all this in mind when you're making these decisions.
Thank you very much. Vito here, Vito? Vito. Akabazi? Okay, very good. Mary Elaine Lyle.
My name's Mary Elaine Lyle and I live at one zero four one six Hill Terrace, nine eight four nine eight. We, my family bought the property in about nineteen sixty four. So we've been here for a while. I want to talk specifically about key issue number eight. I really like the recommendation done by the Ad Hoc Committee. But. If I'm reading it right, the planning commission recommendation was to keep the current permitting. Standard that they're using currently and. I first learned about this standard when I had an issue with one tree that I'm hoping won't die and won't fall on our power lines. So I sent an email in saying, hey, what what can? So I sent an email in saying, hey, what can I do? And they told me, well, you know, you've got this really big lot and you can cut down two trees in a year. And you could cut down four trees in five years. I'm going, yeah, I've got 60% tree coverage. I can do this without really impacting things too much. But somebody who has 1%, 2%, 3%, they cut down that many trees, they don't have any trees. So that's why I really support the ad hoc committee on percentage, not the numbers game. I fully understand this is more cost, more cost, not effective, because it's going to cost more. You've got to have more people to do it, more time to do it. Right now, you can just look up the lot and say, oh, it's that big. Oh, you can cut that many trees. Whereas if you're looking at the percentage, you're going to have to do something like the geomaps to figure out what the percentage is in the lot. It takes more time. It takes more people. It takes more money. It's worth it. You know, in the 80s, when we were having that kind of weather, people would talk about, are you staying cool? And I'd say, yeah, I don't have air conditioning. We occasionally open windows and turn fans on. With 60% true coverage, my house is cool, even in the really hot weather. So I really hope that you can relook at this and go to, well, if you've got to keep the numbers for a little while, try and move to a percentage. It'll be better for all over. Thank you.
Next, Kim Underwood indicated no. Welcome to change your mind if you'd like. Joan Cooley, you've listed yourself, but you don't have a yes or a no. So which would you like? Okay. Lisa Rose was a no. Are you still a no? Okay. Taylor Underwood? Derek Faust?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Derek Faust. I am an instructor at Clover Park Technical College in the Environmental Sciences Program. I am not here making comment on their behalf. I'm here as a private citizen at 8610 Wildwood Avenue Southwest in Lakewood. But I mentioned my role at Clover Park because we have over 700 Gary Oak trees on our outdoor lab property, along with an 80-acre wetland that I oversee the management of. So, you know, I have some insight when it comes to this tree preservation code. But as I said, I am here representing myself as a Lakewood resident. I looked through the key issues and I think there's an opportunity to do better based on the planning committee's recommendations. And my analysis is based on my scientific expertise and analysis, but also in the spirit of compromise, which unfortunately, in my time as a voter, doesn't seem to happen too much in the political realm. So getting to key issue number one, the canopy goal. 30% is only 4% more than the current estimated goal. If we're looking at that as a goal for 2050, that doesn't seem very ambitious to raise canopy cover by 4%. In the spirit of compromise, I would recommend increasing that to 35% goal. And key issue number two, it deals with the square footage for the residential exemption. It's the recommendation from Planning Commission was 17,000 square feet. And I guess it's more of a question, and perhaps you can have someone from the city take a look at this. What percentage of the lots would fall under that 17,000 square foot threshold for the residential exemption? I looked at the parcel information, the parcel map that's publicly available, and it seems like that would be more than 50% of the lot being exempt. Number six, the significant trees, oaks are very important, but so are other trees, particularly large trees for habitat, thinking osprey, eagle nest, among many other creatures that would use those trees, those very large trees. And then number nine, true replacement. I'd just like to recommend that you ensure that replacement is with native species and not invasive. And then finally, on number 11, defines just a question, what is considered malicious? I may have missed that, but yeah, we need to be clear of that. Overall, the goal is to increase the canopy and get shade where it's needed, which in my view is the less affluent neighborhoods. And thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, Lawrence Cleveland.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and great evening to all my neighbors. Really appreciative of this opportunity. And I was planning on just talking about some of the trees around my house and I still am. When I moved here, I moved into a forest-like fantasy land. And I built a sanctuary in my backyard that included hand digging out seven old growth stumps. And I had a little sanctuary there. There was the property behind us that was donated to Audubon Society by a man who wanted to just put one house back there and save the trees. So he sold the two lots in the back to my neighbor and I, and then he sold just the corners in the front, so there'd only be one entrance. Well, Scotty got a notice from Audubon Society, it's just going to be a bird sanctuary to honor your dad's wishes, right? So he donates it to the Audubon Society. Audubon Society put the lot that Gary bought with our four corners for $110,000, up for sale two weeks later for $275,000. So what I'm here about is just the clear cutting of the trees. Now, they put that house 10 foot off of my fence with the water running down onto my property because you can look over the top of my fence and see the footing on that house. And I called, I talked to the city several different times about the trees, about the runoff water. We're going to help you out, chief. I knew the guy for 15 years, one of the city's inspectors. I never even got a call back. I called him back two weeks later. Two weeks after that, I called him back again and I said, well, now they're planting fence posts back there. So I don't know exactly what the city's planning on doing about these trees. I mean, it's the clear cutting that I can't stand seeing. I think that there should be some kind of equitable cooperation and coordination between the developer and the existing residents. There are 12 existing residents around this property that they came in and skinned. The first guy, we talked him into saving some trees. Garrett Holmes bought the property after that. They came in and mowed the rest down. So I've had a private backyard for 30 years and that's gone anyway. The bird sanctuary and Audubon Society bull, but look around. In 91, I've moved into the house that I'm in now and I seen trees falling down all around me. And those trees are all within a mile of my house. There are trees that, well, shoot, 112th East Idolwild, all within two miles of my house, there's trees mowed down on Idolwild, 104th, 112th, besides the lot that's behind my house. And I'm 63 years old. My wife has just been told she has two years left. So I'm not seeing these, you plant so many trees for every tree that you cut down. I'm just not seeing it. But what I'm saying is, go ahead and plant those trees. They're not going to do us any good in our lifetime. And I'm so happy usually that it pisses other people off. And I like to think lofty thoughts up here and support and encourage each other. And then we become better people and a better community and then a better nation. So I'm not here to complain and condemn. I'm just here to identify, bring attention to something that is really starting to bring me down. And that's all these trees. And you say that are canopies more or that it was a prairie? I went out and I walked that property. One of those trees had 150 live greens.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Mr. Cleveland? Mr. Cleveland, I'm going to make sure we get your, Mr. Cleveland, I'm going to make sure we get your address for the record. I have it on the sign-in sheet as 10007 Woodlawn Place Southwest. Is that correct, sir? Thank you. For the record, Madam Clerk, Cindy Cleveland, would you like to speak?
My name is Cindy Cleveland. I've lived in Lakewood since 1991. I moved here from Marino, Nevada. I drove into Lakewood, Washington into an enchanted forest. One by one, I've watched lot after lot after lot disappear. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I've watched lot by lot disappear. I'm sorry. I've recently been diagnosed with cancer and they gave me two years. I have a bucket list. One of my bucket lists would be amazing if I could change you people's mind on what you do with the tree canopy in the city of Lakewood. 30% is not enough. It's not enough. It's just not. 40% is not enough. You people go in, you demolish the entire area. I watched an acre of property behind my house. I've watched deer be born. They came in with the chainsaws. The deer ran. It demolished the entire thing. From 1991, I've lived in this house. I'm and my husband are business owners in the city of Lakewood. This is a very important subject to me. My mother told me when I was a child, I lived from born to four years old in the city of Alaska, in the state of Alaska. I am a tree hugger. I admit it. She said, when I used to drive by and they were cutting the trees, I would cry. Go home and look at your children and look at your grandchildren. How important is climate to you? I would like you all to go home and take a glass of wine, whatever. Sit out on the balcony, sit in your chair, pick a tree, close your eyes, breathe in deeply, and just enjoy what that tree gives you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sean, Sean Arant is next.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sean Arant. I'm a resident of Tacoma. I've spent a lot of time in Lakewood. My mom's side of the family lives here. My grandma would tell me stories of, you know, a continuous line of, you know, prairie and oak trees, you know, from Lakewood all the way down to the Sound, you know, up to the Bald Hills, so close to the mountain. About 97% of that ecosystem, which is unique to this region, has been lost, right? Right now, we're fighting for scraps. Lakewood, you know, it's in a unique place. This is a, this is a place where, you know, there's really diverse riparian areas, streams, lakes, and then prairie. It's really important that we fight for these things and that we protect these things. The treeless nature of South Tacoma Way, which is a heat island, that is a failure of policy. All of these old oak trees that have been cut down over the past 20, 30, 40, 50 years, that is a failure of policy. You all now have the opportunity to rectify that and it's not going to fix the past, but it can save what's left. I took a look at the ad hoc tree committee's recommendations and, you know, just to take it back a minute. That, that committee is more representative, representative of Lakewood than the planning commission. You know, the planning commission is made up of developers. They have a, they have an agenda and that agenda is to make money. It's to build housing or to pay people to build housing. We all know that they don't actually work. Look, we need the ad hoc tree committee's recommendations to be passed in full. That is a fair ask. They had a good process. They went through it. There were developers on that committee. There was a guy who owned a tree cutting company on that committee and he voted in favor of tree preservation. They all voted in favor of it. It's nearly unanimous and, you know, eventually the master builders person got disheartened and dropped off. Cool. He wasn't even from here. 40% is a good goal. Removing the exemption on residential lots is a good goal. It is not good to reduce the significant size of Gary Oak trees. They take a long time to grow. You know, you've heard it out here. They're basically irreplaceable. We're never going to see, you know, a 100-year-old Gary Oak tree. Again, we have a finite amount of those in our lifetime. One more thing is that, is that trees in riparian areas are significant. Trees at the Clover Creek watershed, which again, failure of policy, very significant. They need to be protected too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Helen Wagner?
Good evening. I'm Helen Wagner. I live at 8112 29th Avenue Court South in Lakewood. So now we are on the verge of adopting a new tree code. All is well, right? Not so fast. The original document had a goal of increasing the canopy to 40% by, as I understood it, 2050. That is plausible, except that many of us will be dead a quarter of a century from now. And if the planet continues to heat up at the current rate, that will include most of us. However, the revised proposal calls for only 30% canopy. We're going backwards. Every effort must be made to save every healthy tree. To save the maximum canopy, especially Gary Oaks, there needs to be more pressure on developers. At this point, the code allows cutting Gary Oaks if one pays a stip fine, which developer, which for developers means simply paying a fine. And that is the part of the cost of doing business. Slow down more ugly warehouses. At this point, one may destroy green spaces and build commercial structures in our backyards. Obviously, this is a problem that involves more than just a tree code. But if we are to keep Lakewood livable, we need to address the whole problem. More commercial building is not in our best interest. Yes, I know it's good for the tax base. So let us not pat ourselves on the back for successful balancing of ecology and commercial growth. The governor's congratulations are misguided. With our climate crisis, there can be no balance. The environment must come first. We need to save the canopy and curb the increase of carbon-producing warehouses. Thank you.
Next, Christopher Escobedo on the list.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Escobedo, and I live at 8111 Lushy Road, Lakewood. I just came to just lay, just let y'all know that y'all, you know, y'all need to listen to this ad hoc committee. You know, y'all, y'all appointed that committee. Then you should be listening to them. And it's kind of sad to see that that the commission is trying to go for the 30% canopy when they said 40%. You know what I mean? Like, what's going on there? Well, you know what's going on there. You got some slippery people in there. You know, you got people who are not there for the people, only there for the money. I mean, and it's sickening, you know, and you got Don Anderson over there. He, you know, he's throwing a little bit of propaganda every now and then somehow. And I don't even think that should be right. And he's not mayor. So he shouldn't just be able to just throw some propaganda out there real quick, you know, like, we got less or more canopy now. Because this is my land. Told y'all many times, I'm Native American. That means those are my trees. So Europeans, you know what I'm saying, don't deserve to be cutting down our freaking trees just so y'all can make money and, and, and once again, exploit our land and our people. You understand that? That's what's happening right here. And you got these people over here just willing to, you know, fight and debate for that other side to just ruin this place. When you go to Tacoma, it's ugly. They got all this business district that's broken down and tore down, and it's crap. And what did they do? They keep building other places. Let's build some more business district. You know, and that's what y'all want to do? You know, we got so many ugly buildings over here that are just being wasted and new warehouses. Why do you keep letting them build warehouses? It doesn't make any sense. Like, and like, but like I said, y'all need to listen to the ad hoc committee, not, not the, not the commission. What's, what's wrong with y'all? You know what I mean? And obviously, that commission needs to be changed. It needs to be fixed. People that are Native American need to be in there so we can give you our perception of our motherland. You understand that? This is not Europe. It's America. We are American-Americans. You are European-Americans. You see the difference? It's a big difference. And we're gonna demand that you leave our country alone. And if you want to join us, join us. You know what I'm saying? Let's live happily ever after. Heck, yeah. But stop exploiting our land. Stop getting our trees. Stop letting racist people sit up there right beside you and be okay with it. Stop it. Grow up. Raise, raise yourself up. When you see me empowering you, feel empowered. You know what I mean? Let's grab it by the horns and let's change this country. I'm not bullcrap, and I'm telling you, I am a leader. I am a civil rights leader. We're gonna change this country with or without you, but I hope it's with most of you. We know it's not gonna be with him, but I hope it's with most of you. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be personally attacked. And ask Mr. Escobedo, did you have an ancestor who escaped from the Trail of Tears? I did. Did you have a grandmother who grew up on a reservation? I did.
Next is Christina. Christina Minetti is next, please.
Christina Minetti, and I'm from Lakewood. Thank you very much for having gotten us to this point. This is really good. I wanted to point out that I've got copies of the petition. Also, we've had two petitions, and I can leave them with you. I wanted to urge you to implement the Ad Hoc Committee's recommendations immediately, or as soon as you can, as just a first step towards developing a real urban forestry program that would protect Lakewood's tree assets throughout the city on private and public land. Because there's a huge number of issues that have been left unaddressed or unresolved, this process should now be ongoing. And it requires the participation of true experts in the fields of habitat restoration, urban forestry, botany, and dendrology, for example. Not like the suggestion from Ms. Brunel the other day that we, for example, plant tupalo trees as good carbon sequestration, or cork oak, or Patagonian something or other. You know what a tupalo tree is? I'm sure you do. They're the ones that grow like in Mississippi swamps, you know, with the big, like, I mean, we can't have those here. We need real experts who don't just put it in the internet and say, oh, this is what it says, and 10 top trees for carbon. No. We need some real experts. So being Lakewood's big, single biggest asset as a city, its trees deserve the most stringent protections possible. A desert with lakes, the lakes in Lakewood need its trees too. The water cycle and trees are, of course, intimately related. And we can't keep paving it over, destroying it, cutting down the trees. It's gonna, it's a disaster. So it's a crucial first step towards ensuring the preservation of mature tree canopy that already exists so that the people of Lakewood can continue to benefit from it. You have to disregard the Planning Commission, as we heard many times already, about the 30%. And also about only protecting the Gary oaks, because Lakewood needs all of its trees, not just the Gary oaks, as others have said, Dr. Faust as well. It just happens to be that the oaks have the most pressing situation. So in order to expand the tree canopy, of course, you have to protect what you've got. And in order to protect what you've got, you've got to have an inventory, even on private property. I don't care how hard it is, you know, you gotta like say, this is important, and we gotta do it. The concept of what constitutes a significant tree should be reassessed, because if you don't, if you cut down all the little ones, you're not gonna have significant ones any, any, at any time in the future, right? Critical areas have to be respected. You can't just say, okay, cut everything down and just pay $400,000, we'll put it in the bank, and we'll figure out what to do with it later. That's not good. You can't do that anymore. You have to fix the critical areas ordinance. Ambiguities have to be eliminated. I asked Mr. Buhr last year, how is it that, you know, the trees were saved or not saved? You know, why is it that on the industrial zone, they just have to pay, you know, $400,000, and they can cut everything down? It was director's discretion. Director's discretion is very dangerous in the tree code. You can't have director's discretion, because then we're gonna be cutting down everything anyway, or free permits. So I urge you to support, yes, I'm gonna finish, urge you, I urge you to support the Ad Hoc Committee recommendations, and go further, make the urban forestry program, and engage volunteers from the community who will help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, James Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I wanted to talk about the 17,000 square feet cutoff. So at the moment, if you've got a lot 17 square feet, 17,000 square feet or under, you can do what you like with it. The Ad Hoc Tree Committee proposed removing that, that that cutoff, which I, I support. Looking at the Planning Commission, there was a debate, I believe, in the Planning Commission, where some members of the Planning Commission wanted to maintain a status quo. And other members, and I congratulate these, these members, wanted at the very least to have protections for Gary oaks on on sites under 17,000 square feet with no minimum cutoff. That's not, that's not ideal. I think there should be the total protection as recommended by the, as recommended by the Ad Hoc Tree Committee. One thing I should say is that I know that one council, one of you, I'm sorry, I shouldn't address you personally, but one council member is, is not a great fan of Gary oaks. I think he says they're quite ugly, and he prefers big-leaf maples. Yeah, I can understand that. There's, you know, the different people have different tastes. But the problem with big-leaf maples is they're getting hammered by the drought. So however much you like them, they're not, they're not gonna be around in Lakewood for much longer. Gary oaks, on the other hand, are pretty fire resistant. So I think that's why there's a reason for giving such precedence to Gary oaks, aside from the fact that they are part of our traditional, Lakewood's traditional savanna. To completely, to perhaps change the subject slightly, the 17,000-square-foot exemption has actually gone against what the city itself has been trying to achieve. The city has been having a battle with the state regarding adult family homes. And adult family homes have just, have been a major problem in Lakewood, particularly, I believe, in Oak Brook. And the standard thing is that someone would develop an adult family home, would raise it, raise all the vegetation to the ground, because they could, because of that 17,000-square-foot limit. Now, if you had had, what, if you had had right from the beginning, what the Ad Hoc Tree Committee had proposed, the kind of destruction you had seen in places like like Woodbrook, sorry, in Oak Brook, and plus the undesirability of having so many adult family homes, you wouldn't have had that problem. So to conclude, you do need to think about the linkages. So anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Next, next, Casey Crook. Ours too.
Hello. My name is Casey. I was born and raised here in Lakewood. I am here to be a voice for our Gary oaks and for all trees of Lakewood, Washington, our home. I am here to respectfully urge our civic leaders to utilize their voices to speak for the tree life of our home as well. I am asking our city leaders to use the powers of their positions to save the lives of as many Gary oaks as is truly possible. I am asking our leaders to join us in creating true and substantial plans of action which will protect and preserve the ecological health, history, and identity of Lakewood, Washington, our home. Please enable the good people of our community to truly do our best and to truly give our most in protecting Lakewood tree life on both public and private lands. Our community volunteers are asking city council leaders to enable Lakewood's current 26% treetop canopy cover to flourish into 40%. Lakewood Planning Commission is asking that Lakewood's current canopy cover be nurtured no more than an additional 4% at 30%. The Planning Commission's offer of 4% preservation is not a true and substantial plan of action. It is far from it. The future of Lakewood's natural environment deserves better and more. We, long-term and deeply invested citizens of Lakewood, deserve better and more. A true and substantial plan of action must provide real and durable protections for Lakewood's tree life. A true and substantial plan of action must not accept mitigation fees in exchange for destruction of the very natural lands and habitats we seek to serve and protect in the first place. A true and substantial plan of action would certainly require contractors to be licensed in the city of Lakewood and would follow through in truly holding contractors accountable when rules are disregarded and infractions occur. We are all aware of the harsh reality that in this world of man's making, money talks. We who value and honor the natural world and its wondrous gifts must be a collective voice of higher intention, and we must talk louder. I would like to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of Christina Minetti and all of our friends and neighbors who work so hard on behalf of Lakewood's tree life and for the precious natural environment we all enjoy and share. I would like to say thank you to the Lakewood City Council for hearing me speak.
Thank you very much. Next, Sean Hill.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Sean Hill. I'm a resident and a business owner. I live on Lawndale. And I've actually lived in Lakewood since I was like, two. My parents bought a house, and I I often see the Gary oaks in my dreams. I live near Lake City Elementary, that property that used to have the school, and there's a lot of Gary oaks, and I, I hope they never go away. In that vein, I think we need to save as many mature trees as possible, oaks and otherwise. Obviously, the oaks are a benefit to the air as well as the water table. Like many other people, I agree that we need to adopt the Ad Hoc Committee's proposals in total. 40% tree canopy is the goal we need to shoot for. We need to save as many trees as possible for working-class people because they probably don't have fancy houses on big lots, like some of the rest of us may, to enjoy shade and wind. I'm fortunate. I have a lot of big trees on my property. A lot of people don't. And that would include working-class people primarily. So we, we need to listen to the working people, the poor people, not just developers and people with influence and money, and save the trees because it'll benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last individual who has at least signed in on the list for tonight, Vicki Stanich.
My name is Vicki Stanich, and my address is 8915 Dowen Court, Southwest, here in Lakewood. And I am speaking on behalf of Indivisible Tacoma and as a Lakewood resident of 29 years. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, and members of the Lakewood City Council. Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts about tree preservation in Lakewood, particularly with a bow to the few majestic Gary oak trees that exist in Lakewood. I am here to voice my strong support for the Ad Hoc Tree Committee's recommendations regarding amendments to the city of Lakewood's tree preservation code. Tree canopy. A solution to reducing air temperatures in Lakewood is to increase the tree canopy. Case studies have indicated that tree canopy in America is unequally distributed with low-income neighbors and people of color unequally affected by less tree cover. The Springbrook area, as an example, in my view, is at risk for becoming a heat island due to a decrease in tree canopy if the decimation of multiple rare Gary oaks is permitted for warehouse development. The Gary oak tree, reasons to protect the Gary oak trees. Habitat: Gary oaks create great biodiversity. Only about 5% of this quote, quote, "historical habitat" of the Gary oak remains resulting in the Gary oak and 100 species in its ecosystem listed as threatened or worse, many making the red list for endangered species. Removing Gary oaks would create loss of habitat for nesting birds, such as the western bluebird, bantailed pigeon, Cooper's hawk, and many unique butterfly species. The Gary oak ecosystem also includes many indigenous plant species like camus, chocolate lily, and western buttercup, according to, according to the Northwest Wildlife Preservation Society. Number two, drought tolerant with fire-resistant bark. It is the only native oak species in the Pacific Northwest. And number three, Gary oaks grow very slowly. The average time for an oak tree to fully grow is approximately 30 to 35 years. Heat waves also are predicted to become more frequent and more intense. Tree inequality becomes an inequality in climate risk. Heat waves already kill 1,300 people in a typical American summer. The threats are invasive species such as The threats are invasive species such as Scotch broom, Daphne laurel, English ivy, English holly, and snowberry. Douglas firs have also encroached on Gary Oak habitat. The largest threat has been development and urbanization. In summary, please consider the environmental benefits and climate equality of increasing the tree canopy and consider strong protections for the rare Gary Oak with respect to making policy about tree removal in the city of Lakewood. I urge you to support the Ad Hoc Committee's recommendations and recommend that further protections and actions be included in the current amendments as well. Thank you very much for listening to me, Vicki Stanich.
Thank you. That concludes at least the listing of folks who've signed in to address the council during the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda pertaining to the tree preservation code updates. Are there any other individuals in the audience who wish to address the council during the public hearing? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium, and similarly to the others, please state your name and address of record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Galdebeany. I live at one twenty-nine Candlewick Drive, west in Lakewood. Have lived here for a little over fifty years. I'm speaking in favor of the Ad Hoc Tree Committee's recommendations, and I agree with most of the comments that have been made here tonight. In, I'm not going to be speaking directly about trees, but I, from my perspective as a, about forty-year planning and research consultant with my little office here in Lakewood. One of the things, two of the things that seem like they may have been neglected and are often overlooked in public policy are the need for a true inventory of, we need a good, a really good database as a starting point for what is going to be happening in the future. In this case, I think it would consist of a, a true inventory of the current tree canopy, which would identify Gary Oaks and other primary species. And this goes beyond a rough calculation of canopy, whether it's twenty-one percent, twenty-five percent, whatever. I think the inventory would really help us establish that. Another very necessary aspect is the monitoring component of whatever plan comes out of your deliberations. We have to know what's happening in terms of gains and losses and their effect, in effect on the extent of the species that make up the canopy. I guess it's currently estimated at about twenty-six percent. I would say that at least should be increased, the recommendation should be increased by about ten percent or maybe more. I hope that, sincerely hope that the city council will insist on these aspects of inventory and monitoring. Just as a little aside, I've been associated with a, a big plot of land, probably two hundred acres out in Graham called the Morse Wildlife Reserve, and I've been doing that for twenty-five years, I guess. And our, one of our chief objectives is to reestablish an oak savanna out of a pasture land that existed before. We've planted a hundred oak trees and we've planted more, survival rate of about a hundred. It really takes a lot of work. They have to be watered consistently for at least two or three years. Now, this has been twenty years now, and the trees are probably four inches. So a Gary Oak takes a long time, so also think about the mitigation for cutting a three-hundred-year-old tree. Thanks very much.
Others who wish to address the council during the public hearing, feel free.
My name's Ado Equitas, I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I live in Lakewood. Had a lot of people here talking tonight, and none of them seem to be in favor of the reductions. Everybody wants a higher, everybody wants the trees. So why are we still discussing? Is the question. The Ad Hoc Tree Committee made up of a lot of people. A lot of people agree with them, in my opinion. It's not quite enough, but it's a start. It's a start. Cool. The Planning Commission is built on biases. It's all about money. When we're talking about the people, the money should be left out of it. You have a decision to make. So the biases that sit on your board are important, just like the biases that sit in the Planning Commission. One of my allies earlier said that the golf course should be cleared and trees put there. It's a thought. But a member of your board sued the governor to open a golf course during COVID. There's bias. Stop thinking about the money for a minute. Because that's really the only plus on that side. Y'all see a whole big pro list about saving the trees. Y'all see a big con list about knocking them down. If you swap those, the pro for cutting them down, they're gonna get some money out of them. That's about it. Stop thinking with your wallets, please. A lot of people out here today have been saying that they're not gonna live to see this. They ain't worried about themselves. Anderson said earlier that, you know, the, the tree canopy has grown since the city was made. Cool. That wasn't you. Y'all weren't sitting on the board at that time. Y'all got one task, not to kill it. So don't take credit for what you didn't do, but think about what you can do next. All power to the people.
Man, this is past my bedtime. Y'all can hear me? Everybody can hear me? All right. My name's Bunchy Carter, I'm a resident of Lakewood for about two years now. Been an interesting two years, I tell you that. Now, as the young folks say, I'm gonna keep it one hundred with y'all right now. I don't know a whole lot about trees or seventeen thousand square feet. I'm from the project, so I definitely don't know nothing about that. A lot of the things that y'all bringing up tonight, I have no clue what you're talking about. But there is one thing that I do know. See, I'm the minister of defense of the Black Panther Party, so the one thing I do know is how to follow the will of the people. I know that very well. Know how I know? Because I said one day, I said, hey, Ado, listen, I'm gonna throw this rally Friday afternoon at three-thirty. No matter what, that's what's gonna happen. But the people had a different plan. And because the people had a different plan, despite my intentions or whatever I may have been trying to bring about, nothing of any importance is ever established without the people supporting. Now, despite how little I know about trees and all that other stuff, the one thing I have noticed is this, I know how to listen very well. And what I hear is consistent. Consistently, I hear the Ad Hoc Committee has the right idea. Consistently, I hear the Planning Commission is out of their mind. The one thing I do know for certain is I have children, and I would like for there to be a planet here for them to enjoy when I'm gone. Now, mind you, I'm not gonna be around for a lot of the things that I fight for right now, and I know that. Be it old age or the police or whatever the case may be, I won't be here to see. But the important thing now in reestablishing how community is supposed to work is reestablishing their faith in you because you are the leaders that they chose. They didn't choose me, but I stood up. And when I stood up, they chose me. So now is your opportunity to stand up, and I'm sure they'll choose you. Because see, the only way that this works in a positive sense moving forward is if they know, all of these beautiful people know, that their concerns are important to you. So the next time they go to the ballot and they have those empty boxes in front of them with names next to them, if you want your name to be the one chosen, making sure that the will of the people is adhered to is absolutely imperative. I never make a move of any kind without checking with the community first, of any kind. We patrol neighborhoods all the time, in Lakewood, Tacoma, all over Washington. And the one thing I can honestly tell you is this, without you, what I do is unimportant. Without you, I don't matter. So the next time you go to the ballot box, if you don't get what you need in regard to these trees, remember that without you, they don't matter either. All power to the people.
I see one more individual who'd like to...
Hey, hi. Thank you for squeezing me in. My name is Kim Underwood. I've lived here in Lakewood for forty-five years now. We've seen a little of everything. I live on Clover Creek. We were here to see the pink bubbles of PFAS floating down the water. We've seen tree cutting. I know over time, our neighborhood, two doors down, we've had a contractor come in, subdivided the lots, was a heavily treed lot. He managed to save two trees. The neighbor next to him sold her house. She is again opening an adult home, came in for a tree permit, which I believe is way too easy to get. I mean, the people should be charged for a tree permit. You guys are missing your opportunities for revenue. There's no compliance. I've had a takedown tree on, within a riparian area, was a cottonwood. I got a letter from an arborist, which should be required. I did not have to pay for the tree permit. It was easily given to me. I submitted the letter. I was told that I needed to replant. No compliance, nobody ever checked up on me. Nobody said, you know, okay, I've given you a rubber stamp. There was no follow-up whatsoever. There was not follow-up on the Goodman property. There was not follow-up on the lady that wanted to open the adult home. We did have an enforcement officer come out. He was awesome. He issued her a citation, said, you're allowed to take, I believe it was three trees down per year. And we kind of laughed and said, well, gee, you know, give her four years, she's gonna have the entire property cleared. There's got to be limits, and especially where the water's concerned, these riparian areas, they need to be kept cool. The area over in the Springbrook area, if all of those oaks go, they're not only going to heat up the area for a lot of low-cost, low-income individuals in that area, kids that play out in that dirt, that is probably very contaminated with PFAS. And so PFAS moves to the air. When you pull up the tree, you move the soil. It's also moving to our groundwater, Lakewood water. Randy Black has told me recently that they now have several contaminated wells. They've only, they've had to shut down three, I believe it was, three or four permanently, and they are treating other wells. I asked him, Randy, is there a way to trap this? He said, no, it moves with our groundwater. Our trees take care of our groundwater for many, on many, many different levels. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address councillor in the public hearing? Going once, going twice, I'll turn now to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk, give me a hand there, so to speak. Okay, very good. So I will then call on those who appear in the order on my screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hello, my name is Pepper Lysowski, and I'm twelve years old. I live in Los Angeles, California, and I'm here repeatedly to try and help to save the Gary Oaks. These Gary Oaks are not just objects that we can control, that we have control over. They are trees, and trees are essential to the ecosystem. There are over sixty thousand different types of trees on Earth, and there are three trillion individual trees. Just one of these trees breathes in sixty pounds of carbon dioxide in one year, which they breathe out into oxygen that we and all of the animals need to survive. We have to remember that we are sharing this planet, and nature is sharing it with us. We are all guests on this planet, and what I've, what I've been taught when I'm a guest anywhere is to leave it nicer and cleaner than how I found it. My generation has already left with so many wounds on this earth to clean and fix. Even though it's overwhelming now, I hope that we can all help to make it nicer and cleaner than how it is today. So furthermore, what I would like to request is, one, please fully support and expand on the Ad Hoc Tree Committee's recommendations, and two, to please protect the critical areas and priority habitat, including Gary Oak habitats, so that they are not harmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, previously living in Lakewood for many years. It's rather interesting. Trees are not always healthy, and they're not very good to roofs. Roofs can collect leaves and trash and, and then moss grows in the trash, and then roofs leak, and they leak, and then they get mold in the house, and then you get sickness, and especially for poor people, you know, trees shorten the life of a roof, and so it costs them more. And not exactly good for health, you know? Sunshine is good, you know, sunshine is good, and you don't get as much of it there as a lot of other places. But you're only twelve thousand acres, but lots of soot rains down on you every time there's a forest fires. There seems to be no interest whatsoever in forest fires and doing the old-fashioned thing of building fire breaks. So that means that the forest fires in not even the city of Lakewood drop all kinds of junk on you every year. The other thing that you got here, there seems to be a lack of ability to understand property rights. In fact, you know, you have many of these people don't even believe in property rights. Good luck with your getting over that hump. Never happened. Also, in your situation, because, you know, in the, you know, Seattle is coming your way, there's no doubt about it, and they kind of set the pace, and trees and shelters just gonna become home, you know, place for people to hide. They're coming here, in here from all over the world, and the best estimate seems to be two hundred thousand a month. And they bring along with them crime. If you watch some of the big cities that are just governed the way you are, people jump out and chase people knives, and there doesn't seem to be any safe place. They'll even run into, you know, good neighborhoods now. They'll even run into, you know, good neighborhoods now. You've got a lot more problems than the Gary Oak. I can guarantee you that you probably better want to, you want to probably better start working on it and concentrating on it and get some achievement and goals accomplished.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen, for three minutes of my life. I'll never get back. Next, Heidi S.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Stevens from South Tacoma, which is affected by Lakewood policies. I strongly support the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee's originally recommended amendments to your tree preservation code, and I admire Lakewood for it. Despite the comment that the area was previously classified as prairie, it was likely clear-cut prior to becoming an established city. And I'm not familiar with the forest fires of Lakewood, as the previous commenter mentioned, but most of your area is now paved over. More native trees with deep root systems are the best counteraction to present-day unnatural widespread paving. It was easy to see that the only written comments in your agenda packet, which oppose these changes, were from people who stand to personally profit. Their request for construction convenience is short-sighted, outdated, insulting, damaging, and dangerous. Please do not weaken the original amendment recommendations. If anything, make them stronger. Current science indicates that tree canopy is critical for public well-being, as well as the survival of plants, animals, organisms. Trees moderate heat and manage water and maintain habitats vital to most life on Earth. Mature, established variety of trees are our best defense against climate change in these kind of urban areas. However, the loss of such trees will cause more devastating effects of global warming, such as seasonal cyclical changes, bringing both local and worldwide long-lasting aridation, leading to the collapse of significant life systems, including here. We are reaching the point of last chance for impactful change to ward off real devastation. This is your opportunity to be the true leaders of a proactive plan, leaving a legacy of Lakewood and an example to Pierce County. This can and must be done. Protecting trees supports economic sustainability and makes for more desirable communities. Economic growth and environmental preservation both can be achieved, and construction can be done around existing trees. But the loss of trees will mean the loss of stability, which you have been given the power to help shape. And with this vote, we'll decide the direction of Lakewood's future and beyond. So please support the original amendment changes, as well as the additional suggestions provided by the Gary Oak Coalition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Dusari Farmicus.
Good evening, everyone. So, you know, I'm hearing a lot of stuff, you know, a lot of people are bringing up a lot of really good points, you know. I'm not, I'm not an environmental scientist myself, but I I am the Minister of Education of the Panther Party, Washington, and I can would like to talk to everybody about, you know, how this system works and why what we're all doing here, coming together as a people to voice voice our will to power. Why they're probably going to ignore it, because the system isn't set up for us. It's set up for them. It's set up to protect people that own property. Property that was forcibly taken at gunpoint from its rightful owners. And now they still, to this day, have new bearers of colonial violence to protect that stolen property, and those are the police. Okay? And they destroy our natural world. They destroy us. They kill us, and they do it all for money. The people that own the private property do. Okay? And the state, these gentlemen and gentlewomen on the council, exist to manage the affairs of those property owners. Okay? They exist to defend private property. They exist to defend the rights of private property and to manage the affairs of the bourgeoisie, if I can use a big word. So they don't really care about us. They might say they do, you know, they, you know, they might let us vote to see, you know, who specifically is going to represent the affairs of the businesses and the property owners and the capitalists. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. They are going to keep killing us and they're keep destroying the world in order to preserve their property rights and expand their own economic well-being. And again, they do not serve us, and that's why the rules are constantly changing and constantly written and to be confusing and to give them the upper hand. You know, for example, the way that the council can't respond to our questions, but they can respond apparently if one of them gets their feelings hurt. Right? And let me end by saying this, as a white dude myself, I wouldn't respond to a BIPOC individual criticizing something I'm doing by talking about how I may or may not have a BIPOC ancestor, because that's a real bad look, my guy. That is a real bad look. That's cringy as hell. Maybe next meeting you can talk to us about, you know, how some of your ancestors were Irish, and when they first came to America, they were discriminated against. So really, that's like you being black or something like that. All power to the people.
Next is Alice Fong. I'm sorry, Alicia Fong. Alice Fong.
Hello, it's Alice Fong. Thank you. My name is Alice, and I live on Ninety-First Avenue Court Southwest, and thank you for serving Lakewood residents and creating the Ad-Hoc Committee and listening to Lakewood residents and friends. As leaders, our moral obligation is to prevent harm and offer aid, especially in the conversation to cut down mature trees, and in this case, saving the Jerry Oaks and other trees. As speakers shared before me, there are many benefits to these large trees, such as runoff and erosion prevention naturally, cooling us as we continue to see hot weather, habitat for animals, and our very important pollinators that create food for us to eat, our beloved insects and birds. We may not see the benefits today, and decisions you make impact the future, your family members, grandchildren, and beyond. The cleaner air in Lakewood is what brought me here, and I love the amount of trees. In two years, I have seen several areas cut down, a lot of trees to build large homes. At least three of them on my way home and additional two of them that are significant size. And, you know, and now we're building a warehouse. The country of Bhutan understands how important trees are and continue to plant trees, and currently, the country is under seventy percent tree canopy. And they move beyond the net zero carbon footprint and support the rest of the world. Remember, council members and city staff, our city is called Lakewood. Please consider joining our, your neighbors to think beyond money and keep Lakewood filled with lakes and wood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, General Avino X. Name and address, please, sir.
Hey, how you doing? It's actually General Ovunayo X. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Sorry about that work text. I am a resident of Lakewood, have been for all but about eight years of my life. And during that eight years, I actually lived up in Everett, where we had Gary Oak trees as well. They didn't cut any of them down as they didn't really need to. They didn't really want to. I came on here, honestly, to address a few different things tonight, but I'm going to directly address exactly the matter at hand, that is, the Gary Oak trees. As it takes, as this gentleman, several people before me now have said, the gentleman has said he does, he's been doing this for like fifty years. He made some excellent points about the trees. It took twenty-five years for the tree to grow three inches, and you're talking about a tree that's probably good thirty, forty feet tall, hundreds of years old. It's helping with everything out here, the water, the dirt, the animals, y'all depression, things along those lines. So I had a little statement prepared, but I seem to have misplaced the paper here, as I have to deal with a lot of paper at work. But my point being, it's, it's clear that the people want to keep the trees, and it's clear that it's the wise choice to keep the trees. I don't know why that continues to fall on the table. With that, I really need to address this ignorant truck that I had to keep jumping on here to talk about all these ignorant things. Ogland, whatever his name is. Every time he says "Olandish" and just ignorant things, I would like to move to have this gentleman banned from commentary, as it is really, I mean, he don't even live in Washington. He don't live in Washington, goes on here with "Olandis" things that just offend the people, and y'all continue to let him speak. With that being said, I really, I think I ran out of everything that I had on the table prepared. Keep the trees, man.
Thank you.
Get the air clean. All power to the people. Justice Visai Joaquin.
Next is Michelle Ryder.
Am I the last person?
No, ma'am, there are a few.
Oh, okay.
Few.
Hello, my name is Michelle. My pronouns are she/her. I'm white, and I live at seven zero nine Wilson Street, Southeast in Olympia. And I want to start by commending you all for your joint city council meeting with the Nisqually Tribal Council that you held last November. Never has a city council meeting electrified me like that. Yes, I just used the words electrified and city council meeting in the same sentence. But it's true. The work you all do is so important, including your sincere efforts to collaborate with the first peoples of this land. In this meeting, you discussed, quote, "landmarks, history, and environmental issues," unquote, which brings me to why I'm speaking tonight. Protecting all trees, as several folks have pointed out, is important. But I especially urge you to protect the city's Gary Oak populations, because that is where landmarks, history, and environmental issues converge. Gary Oaks, called Cha'adzats in Leshutseed, are not only ecologically significant, but culturally significant. These trees are a keystone species of the historic prairie oak ecosystem that once blanketed this area. When the earliest foreigners visited this land, they described the oak-dotted prairies as absolutely stunning, the most beautiful landscapes they had ever seen, writing that they were more beautiful than the parks of England. And of course, they thought they were seeing virgin wilderness, but they weren't. These prairies and oak woodlands were the result of intensive indigenous management of the land. For thousands of years, the Native Americans regularly burned the prairies to cultivate hundreds of food plants, plants also for medicine and technology. These prairies were like an indigenous Costco. Burning the prairies kept the landscape open, renewed the grasses, and protected the oaks, enabling them to flourish. When I look at Gary Oaks, I am astonished that many predate white settlement. They represent First Nations civilizations stretching back millennia, themselves predating the Great Pyramids of Giza. So if, as you said, the council prioritizes landmarks, history, and environmental issues, protecting Gary Oaks is a must. I love what Mike Branstadter said at the joint council meeting. He said, "We want to have a future that is informed by history." "We understand when we look to the future, the future isn't the next year, but the next generation." Lakewood's Gary Oaks tell thousands of years of history right up to the present. They tell the story of the many nations that continue to live beneath their lush canopy, Nisqually, Puyallup, Stillacom, American, and more. And Lakewood is the best place in Washington to experience them. They fill Lakewood with a splendor I've seen in no other city. Even cities named after this beloved tree, like Oak Harbor on Whidby Island. You can pass through Oak Harbor without seeing a single oak. A future I don't want for Lakewood, especially for future generations. Thank you for hearing me, and I encourage you to prevent the further destruction of Gary Oaks in the city and to ensure that the Tree Committee's recommendations are passed unamended. I'd like to close out on Leshutseed as a reminder that we are on native land. How tubes chillips to chaych de bootchaf, oi?
Thank you. Next is Mr. Eric Sebel.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. Look, I know it's late. You've heard a lot of testimony. I had a three-minute speech ready to go, but I'd rather just talk to you.
Go ahead, sir. We just need a name and address.
Yes, my name is Eric Sebel. I live on Poncedeleon Creek, and I'm with Pierce County Audubon Society. Thank you very much for instituting the Tree Preservation Committee, and thank you so much for listening to some of the awesome testimony tonight. I'm just simply going to say that we are trying to form an initiative to get an urban forest planted here in Lakewood. That any urban forest, however, must need a watering system to help keep the trees alive. Trees need at least five years' worth of watering in order to make it to a viable state. We support the goal of forty percent canopy. We think it's achievable. It is ambitious, but we can do it. Again, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate the brevity. Next speaker is a phone number, so you'll have to identify yourself. It's two five three two two eight two five six three.
That would be me, and my name is Patricia Federley. Can I be, am I being heard? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you, but it's difficult. So if you could speak a little bit more clearly, I heard Patricia Federley, and I'm not sure of address, ma'am.
Oh, yes, I haven't said that yet. Is this better?
It's a little muffled.
Well, it's best I can do. Mayor Whalen, members of the city council, my name is Patricia Federley. I live in Tacoma. I am speaking tonight as a member of DeHoma Audubon Conservation Committee and as conservation chair of the Tacoma Garden Club, which is a local club within the Garden Club of America. And I will also try to be brief, given the hour. Both organizations have many members who reside in the city of Lakewood, and both organizations strongly support adoption of an ordinance consistent with the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee for the reasons enumerated by previous speakers. But I wanted to address the need to set up a mechanism to achieve the goals of the Ad-Hoc Committee to protect and expand the canopy. And as the prior, as the previous speaker has stated, one, the first step would be a true inventory of the canopy. Next step would be monitoring the gains and losses of the canopy, and then finally, a mechanism to really create a true urban forest. And in reaching that goal, we would urge you to adopt the amendment proposed by council member Branstadter, which provides a practical way to prevent the net loss of tree canopy in the future. It ensures that funds dedicated to replanting trees off-site to replace those cut down will actually be spent, will actually be spent to increase the and protect the tree canopy. The proposed ordinance establishes a fund to hold monies collected by the city for violations and off-site mitigation when a tree is cut down. However, many cities collect funds for such violations but never spend it on a tree restoration, on tree restoration, something which defeats the intent of the ordinance. The amendment also provides funds to, to make the inventory mentioned earlier as to locations where trees within the city can be planted, such as parklands, rights-of-way, and private lands, and ensures that trees actually replaced are replaced if they are cut down. To accomplish this, grants are offered to nonprofit organizations, land trusts, and landscape companies to acquire land within the city and to plant and nurture newly planted trees, including establishment of a water system. We would urge you to adopt the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee, as well as the amendment mentioned. And it would make Lakewood a true, a model for other communities in the South Sound to protect tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tikamira Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to
Uh, I just want to um, make a comment about specifically. Uh, the campy calls. But before, before that, I just wanted to comment on what Dennis Haugen said a bit back. Anybody with at least two working brain cells wouldn't think that um. Having trees would be bad for health. So I just want to point out that. Um, even though, yes, there might be the things with the roof. Obviously, trees, they um, decrease the amount of uh, air conditioning required. And in terms of health. It's shown that they're good for mental health. There's a whole list of things. Trees are good for health. If you don't think so, that is stupid. So. Going on to the question of tree canopy goals. Um. The ad hoc committee. Obviously, uh, wanted a. Forty percent canopy goal. And the planning commission lowered that to thirty percent. According to Planet Geo, um, I think what they said. Um, Lakewood's numbers were were like twenty-six or twenty-seven percent, if I remember correctly. So that's only a three or four percent um, goal. And the thing is that. Uh. Planet Geo's methodology is not at all specifically customized for Lakewood. All they use is satellite imagery and that is certainly prone to error. You could accidentally count bushes. And as you could actually see in their maps, it's they were cat counting bushes. As trees for some things. So twenty-six percent is actually. Uh, probably an overestimate of what we have. And considering there's a margin of error of what Planet. Geo's numbers are. A thirty percent goal is. Basically no goal at all. A four percent goal is. Trivial. And if this is by twenty fifty, then. That's just ridiculous. So I think one should remain at a forty percent goal. Um. It's always better to aim higher rather than lower. Um. And yeah, go with the forty percent goal, not the thirty percent goal. Forty percent as a minimum. So that's all I wanted to say. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual with uh, their hand. Raised. During the public hearing and Madam Clerk, unless I see. Any others raised or any lingering. Phone people.
Mayor, we have no other hands raised at this time.
Then I will declare the public hearing closed. As I conclude the public hearings I just did, I just want to, before we take a break, say thank you for all of you um. Taking the time to come tonight. It's been a lengthy evening, but we appreciate your comments and your participation in this long process. As you know, we are going to be taking. Uh, all of these comments uh, under advisement as we turn to our next study session. Which will be in a few weeks. We may have one session, we may have two. Uh, but we will ultimately likely take action before the end of the year, one way or the other. So. Thank you again for coming. At this time, I'm going to uh. Take a brief five minute recess before we revisit the next item on the agenda, which will be ordinance number seven, seven, three. So let's take five minutes, come back at ten, twenty. We're in recess. I have to stand. Have to stand. Thank you. All right, folks, let's reconvene.
In urban forestry program.
Yeah. Yeah, something different than water. All right. We have reconvened. Thank you all for your indulgence. We now turn to the ordinance section of tonight's agenda, ordinance number seven, seven, three. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven, seven, three vacating the terminal westerly thirty-six feet of eighty-eighth Avenue Court Southwest. West of the intersection with Wadsworth Street Southwest.
Very good. And for this, I'll uh, call on. Frank Swawinski, our associate civil engineer, to give us an overview before we move adoption of the ordinance.
Mayor, City Council, for brevity's sake and with council permission, I'll forego reciting the entire revised staff report, which was made available to.
Thank you. Yeah.
So. City Council discussed the ideas determined during the the public hearing and that neither of the suggestions would be in best double, best interest to the public. Recommendation of the Director of Engineering stands that the mayor and city council should approve the vacation as originally submitted. With compensation equal to the full appraised value of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you for your brevity, Mr. Swawinski. Are there any questions? For our civil engineer tonight on the framework of ordinance seven, seven, three? Move approval. It's been moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Masa. We approve. Ordinance seven, seven, three. Any further questions, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. You've got your uh, ordinance seven, seven, three adopted. Thank you. We now turn to unfinished business. Mr. Caulfield.
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Any new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Any brief reports by the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a report. Uh, recently, the council's been asked to issue two proclamations. Um, the first is to. Is recognizing September twenty-fifth. The week of September twenty-fifth is childhood cancer awareness month, uh, week here in Lakewood. Um, you actually issued this proclamation back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. However, you were not approached the last two years. If this is something you wish to proceed with, it's recommended that you include this as part of your next regular meeting, which would be September nineteenth and. Mayor, unless there's any objection, we can certainly move forward with that if you, if you wish. Um, the second is a request from an organization called Leave Ten South Sound. For a proclamation declaring the week of October seventeenth. National Estate Planning Awareness Week. And again, if the city council wishes to proceed with this proclamation. It's recommended that that be included as part of your October third, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Um, in addition, we learned last week that the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary. Actually, next Monday on September twelfth, and we'd like to make the recommendation that uh, this body. Um, issue a proclamation recognizing the chamber's fifty years of uh, celebrating fiftieth anniversary um, of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce proclamation. Do that as part of your next regular meeting on September nineteenth, unless there's any objection and. Working with the chamber to try and get some wherasses and all of that good stuff. Um, wanted to also let you know as it relates to um, the library, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, and her team had been having. Conversations with the um, library system and um, you know, trying to help them out and deliver services as they're looking to move into some kind of a temporary facility. And so, long story short, we've been able to negotiate an agreement with them for the months of September through December. To use some of our public space here at City Hall, for example, the city council chambers and some of our hallway area. And in allow, allow the library to provide some um, some of their programs such as weekly family storytime. Um, also some monthly programs that they have for adults and uh, just weekly pop-up library services that they have. So um. Just I wanted to um, let the council know that that that's gonna happen. Um, also, the library advisory committee, they had their um, second meeting on August twelfth. Um, some of the, you know. Um, some of the, you know, key takeaways from the meeting is that, um, they were provided an update on uh, potentially an interim Lakewood library facility, but the specifics aren't yet available. The library board is expected to take action on that at their next meeting, which is scheduled for September, September fourteenth. Um, the library committee also received a kind of an evaluative framework to be used to assist them as they're moving forward and reaching their recommendations. Um, also, uh, the city provided details on parking requirements as it relates, not just in our downtown area where the current library is, but also over in the Tillicum neighborhood. Um, the library also brought in an architect to provide some visuals and options in terms of what a modern library um, design looks like. And actually, if you haven't seen that, that's actually worthwhile taking a look at, um, on the on their website. Um, also, several members of the committee were interested to know how perhaps a, you know, a new library could incorporate a senior community center. And, um, so the result of that is myself, our Parks and Recreation Director, and our senior center coordinator are going to attend the next meeting on September sixteenth to just provide them an overview of, you know, how we ended up where we are today, going back to two thousand and ten and the City Council's policy position on that. Um, we also understand that they were going to be given a tour of the Tillicum Library as well as being shown the vacant piece of property that the city acquired over on Union Ave several several years ago. But again, their next meeting is scheduled for, um, September sixteen. Um, also, the library district has hired two structural engineers to look at um, bond-ready estimates as it relates to the current library, if that's the direction of the recommendation that, um, the Library Advisory Committee does move forward with. Um, they've also allocated additional funds into an expanded outreach work to be done. That's going to be done above and beyond the the joint contract that we already have, and the city will not be participating in that. Um, also, the, uh, Executive Director of the library will be here with, uh, actually with the Board Chair as well as part of your September twelfth study session, just to give you a walkthrough, talk through and an update in terms of what's happening, things like that. Um, and then I think as I previously reported, we're looking at scheduling a joint meeting between this body and the Board of Trustees for the Library Advisory Committee to report out on their final report and recommendations. And that'll probably happen in the early to mid part of November, or based on the current timeline and the way things are working, that's the way it it seems to be coming together. Um, switching gears, um, the Puget Sound Regional Council, specifically their Growth Management Policy Board, um, back in July began having discussions on that um, an agency's comprehensive plan would be certified, not just based on transportation policies, but also housing policies, which is which is something new, and it would go into effect as part of the next major update, which would be in two thousand and twenty-four. This was a bit surprised to us. Um, we track what's going on, but again, this is my opinion, my opinion. Um, PSRC kind of taken a top-down approach rather than reaching out to, you know, the local agencies such as the Pierce County Regional Council and, uh, kind of working it up from there. But, um, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, it appears that the motivation for including the housing plan requirements is that housing, jobs, and transportation are linked, which makes sense, and that, uh, um, and that housing is a quote-unquote transportation transportation-related issue and should be included in the certification process. Now, what that means and how that comes together, still, we don't know. Um, we are recommending that hopefully, um, and we're doing this at the staff level, that, um, the Pierce County Regional Council at their next meeting in September, I think it's September fifteenth, and I know a couple of you sit on that board, that you at least be made aware that that's happening, and perhaps there's be some kind of involvement or engagement um, at the local level on that. So again, just, um, wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, Pierce County, um, did, um, just want to report that they received seventeen project submissions for the fourteen million, uh, for the eight million dollars in ARPA funds that they have available for sewer and water programs. And, um, actually, those seventeen projects total fourteen million, so there's a gap there of six million. The City of Lakewood has applied for, um, three projects, plus we have sponsored the Habitat for Humanity project over in Tillicum on Boat Street, of which you just approved a straight vacation for them. So, um, I think we're looking pretty good in terms of getting some funding based on, based on the list. So, uh, we'll keep you appraised of that. Um, Pierce County is expected to make a decision and bring forward a recommendation based on some prescribed criteria um, to the Pierce County Council later later this year. Um, also, some really good news. This is a follow-up to some good news. Um, I had reported a couple of weeks ago that the Public Works Engineering Department had received a grant for uh, Custer Road between John Dower and, um, leading up to Bridgeport, um, on the west side of Bridgeport there for, uh, curb's gutter sidewalk and street improvements. And, um, the original grant amount was one point two seven eight million. That would require a city match of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Well, they came back last year and they, last week, rather, and they said, nope, no match on the city. We are going to increase that grant award to the total project cost of one point four two million. So, uh, I just wanted to, that went from good news to great news. So just wanted to pass that on, and I think that's just a reflection of the relationship that our, our engineers have with the various grant agencies at the state level and, um, particularly washed on. Um, the Lakewood Police Department is undertaking its reaccreditation, which occurs every four years, and that's, um, going through the WASPIC, the um, Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. So they're about ninety-nine percent of the way through. So there's a couple more small steps to undertake before it's finalized. Um, we've been getting really positive feedback throughout the whole process. Actually, want to, um, recognize our Training Officer, Mike Wiley, who has been facilitating this from top to bottom. And, um, so we should be able to report to you in the next month or so, um, that we have received, uh, re-accreditation of the police department. And and by the way, this is no small undertaking. It's a big deal. It's not a lot of police departments are actually accredited. Um, so again, a positive reflection on, um, on our police department and our officers. Um, the police chief recruitment, um, continues to move forward. We have, um, two virtual meetings that are open to the public that are scheduled next week. The first one is on Tuesday, September thirteenth at six P M. And then the other is on Saturday, September seventeenth at nine A M. In addition, uh, we have a survey out there in terms of, you know, people provide being provided an opportunity in terms of the qualities that they would like to see in a new police chief. And that survey actually closes on October twenty-first, so it's open for for a long time for people to be able to provide feedback. Um, I think as I previously reported, I don't know if I did or not, but I wanted to expand on this. So, Western State Hospital Master Facility Plan, city's hearing examiner issued a final decision approving the plan on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and, um, thereafter, there was, uh, an eight or a nine-day time period uh, that would take us through August thirty-first for, um, folks to come back with, you know, to to, I won't say appeal it, but to ask for reconsideration. Uh, that timeline has gone by, so now we're in the twenty-one day appeal period, um, which will take us into the latter part of September. Um, once we get through the appeal period, if there are no appeals, then the master plan will be in place. And, um, DSHS can move forward with what the master plan has been approved for. Um, what we'd like to do is kind of give this body a walkthrough, talk-through. Um, and we've identified January twenty-third study session in terms of what's going on there. And by that time, we expect to have more information from DSHS as it relates to the actual timelines of buildings that they plan on building over there. So just wanted to kind of give you a warning order that that's gonna be, um, that's gonna be coming up. So really, the next critical path item is, uh, the latter part of September, and so long that there's no appeals, then the master plan, um, goes into goes into effect. Um, on October fifteenth, this body is going to be having, again, your another half-day retreat to talk about your legislative priorities. Um, just wanted to kind of give you a sampling of 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 some of the items that we're pulling together. Some of these items should be no surprise to you. On the state legislative agenda, um, you know, it's every two years, we have to go back and ask for the funding and support of the Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program. We are asking for a six percent inflationary increase on that. So far, that's been well-received by DSHS. Um, in addition, we are asking for some changes in the proviso language, so that's not so specific in terms of the positions that we have to put put in place in turn in support of the program. And, um, our motivation for doing that is we had to temporarily pause that program when we had a shortage of officers. And it was because the language was so prescriptive that, you know, we weren't able to allocate other resources to deliver services over there. So, uh, we have had some conversations with DSHS on that, and we're hopeful that 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 the um, modified proviso language, as well as the dollar amount, will be included in the governor's, um, budget proposal, which he's expected to release later this later this winter. Um, on the state capital budget side, um, we're asking for, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to partner with the Nisqually Tribe to again construct a series of investments at Fort Stillicum Park that features the, um, and recognizes the tribe itself with a with a, um, a number of, um, a number of improvements. And that's for the twenty-eighth district. And since we're also in the twenty-ninth district, we reached out to LASSA again. As you know, LASSA is moving forward with their twenty-four, twenty-five unit low-income affordable housing development. They just received three and a half million dollars from the county. It's about a ten to twelve million dollar project. Um, so our recommendation is that we help them seek another half a million dollars in support of this project. And again, I think that would be a good project for the twenty for the for the twenty-eighth district. Um, we are talking about the whole issue of adult family homes and how we want to approach that as a legislative priority for this body. So I wanted to give you a heads up, heads up on 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 that as well. Um, some of the items in the manual, um, tax increment financing, this is something we don't have to carry the water on, but we are working behind the scenes on, is to include the definition of the types of public improvements so that state-owned property can be utilized. For example, the Washita property on on, um, Pacific Highway, that was something that was inadvertently left left out. They're also, um, making some other minor changes to that, and it's being initiated by the ports. So again, we can kind of be a strap hanger here as opposed to having to be, um, out in front of this. But again, we are providing support, um, um, behind the scenes on it. Um, a couple of other items, I know some of the things, these have been brought up by this body, the Camp Murray Boat Launch. We have reached out to Camp Murray to see if they have an interest as a follow-up to the annexation analysis that we did in two thousand and twenty um, to, uh, partners or relates to improvements down at the boat launch, whether that's something that's taken on by the city or by them or in are in partnership. So, um, we have had a couple of phone conversations with them on that, but nothing succinct at this point in time. So I'm hoping in the next month or so, we'll have some more information to share with you on that. Um, likewise, um, uh, DSHS staff have communicated that they would be willing to at least begin to have a conversation about um, historic Fort Stillicum. And I know this body has in the past had in your state policy manual interest in, um, having the city be more involved, including taking ownership of that part of of Western State Hospital, and then working with the Historic Fort Stillicum Association on further improvements there. So, um, I have a feeling that that, you know, we we have to wait for the master plan to be in place, and so it's kind of a timing issue. So I just want to kind of try and manage expectations on that. Um, and we'll see where it where it where where it lands. Um, also, um, parks grants, you know, every two years, Ms. Dawsworth and her team, they apply for grants, and they do very, very well. Um, we have applied for four, uh, three in support of Ward's Lake Park Phase Two. Um, one point two five million in land and water conservation fundings, W W R P funding of half a million in a youth athletic facilities grant for the BMX track, which is going to be part of Phase Two of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, um, another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is with that same grant for a pickleball court over at Harry Todd, Harry Todd Park. Um, and then we are also requesting one point five million in a, um, the state defense community compatibility account, which has been authorized by the state legislature, but is not funding. SSMCP will be taking the lead and getting it funded, but we are going to be submitting a one point five million dollar grant as our match monies for future, um, North Clear Zone property acquisitions. So those are some of the key highlights, um, on the on the state side. Um, on the federal side, you know, the good news is that Congress, um, approved that bipartisan infrastructure investment and jobs act earlier this year. It's a five-year program. What cities are finding out is it works, it doesn't work, and so we're talking to some other cities and trying to, um, evaluate, okay, what's working, what's not working, what's the gap, and what fixes need to be made there. Now, along those lines, um, one of the programs that we know does work, particularly for big projects, is the RACE program, the RACE grant. So that used to be, um, Senator Murray's, uh, brainchild from a number of years ago. It's changed over time. But the good news on that is that cities under two hundred and fifty thousand population can now apply. So our recommendation is that we apply for that. And, um, the one project in in Lakewood, because one of the key criteria is, you know, it needs to have a good, sound economic cost-benefit analysis would be the, um, the downtown Green Boulevard in the subarea. And so we would be looking in the in the range of fifteen to twenty-five million dollars. In terms of managing expectations, I have a feeling that this would probably be a two, three, or a four, even a five-year process to get the monies, because not too many smaller agencies have received this funds. Um, we did learn last year that both Linwood and Bothell received a RACE grant. But but the Linwood one was literally a bridge over I five, and Bothell, again, was a big concrete piece of construction and supporter of their downtown as part of the state highway. So, um, I I the the good news is that we're allowed to apply, and we're, you know, figuratively within the language, you know, we we we, you know, we're eligible. So, um, but that's, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Um, also, uh, we want to continue to, uh, pursue, uh, policy objectives for standalone grant programs for medium-sized cities. Again, you know, the Bipartisan Investment in Jobs Act is good, but it's it's not as good as, again, as I think everybody thinks it is. Um, also, we want to continue to strengthen for future use the Defense Community Infrastructure Program. So the key word there is infrastructure, but the one bit of infrastructure that has not received any funding, and I know Councilmember Anderson, was it like three or four years, are transportation projects. A number of other items have been funded, but not transportation. So we want to work with our delegation to have transportation put in there. Now, right now, we don't have a project. Um, but again, in the future, as we look out, you know, a handful of years, who knows what's gonna happen. Um, and then, um, I I know this is not the right term, but earmarks, I think they call them community projects now. Um, looks like we, you know, knock on wood, we're gonna get the two and a half million for the construction of the last phase of South Tacoma Way. So as we look out next year, what's the next project, uh, going back to our state grant, um, we'd like to recommend LASSA. Um, and and helping them with with their project, you know, that's one that's queuing up there, moving forward. Um, I think as we look out two, three, four years, literally, two years, three years, four years, some other opportunities could be the H Barn, could be the Urban Park in the downtown, could be the library or a community senior center. I think we have all kinds of options there as we look out into the near future. So, um, I'm hoping that kind of creates a little bit of excitement, um, for this body, again, working with our congressional delegation. Um, and then, uh, just from a calendar standpoint, this went Thursday, Thursday from three-thirty to five-thirty, though the program starts at four fifteen. Partners for Parks is having an event on the H Barn Project Update. And, um, so I know I'm going, I just, I'd like to know how much money they raised. So that's 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 what I want to know. Um, and, uh, and then, um, on Friday at two P M., we have the nine eleven remembrance ceremony right out front here. And then, um, I think as I previously reported, we're gonna have two more weeks of farmers' market beginning next week, next Tuesday on the thirteenth, and then um, on the twentieth as 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 well. And then on the seventeenth, of course, is, um, the Saturday Street Festival, the Fiesta de la Familia. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Bokey has a question for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. City Manager, go back to your state legislative comments and the parks projects. Uh, Ms. Dawsworth presented those, um, made presentations to whatever state boards she had had to. Have we heard of the how we scored on those?
Um, yeah, I actually had a chance to talk to her earlier this afternoon, and and she's gonna have more detailed information for me in the next week or so. But, um, her initial reaction was she, they, her teams, her team did a nice job. So the the initial feedback is positive.
Okay, because the important, so we understand the importance of that is they're they're all ranked.
That's correct.
By a score.
Yeah.
Each project.
That's correct.
And then the governor makes a proposal as to how much to to fund in each of those categories. And then the legislature can add or subtract.
That's correct.
Accept, add, or subtract.
That's that's correct, Councilmember.
So, okay, good. Then typically, we have done really well. So, um, I mean, the 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 people who's who score that, I think, and our folks do a really nice job. So I'm looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Brandstetter.
Maybe more from Ms. Walker, uh, without going to your executive session or disclosing anything that isn't public record. What's the procedural status of the Dirk Mayberry, uh, property abatement?
I am not aware that any new action was brought to bear in court, and that would mean that we should be proceeding in accordance with our, um, mission to abate the property. But I have not heard that there was any new action taken.
We approved the contract tonight.
I know. I saw the contract.
I know, I saw the contract was approved, but his appeal time essentially is run.
Well, the court gave him sixty days, the sixty days have run and there's been nothing filed, and I think that leaves us free to proceed. That's not to say he won't have his own view of the universe, but our our plan was to not. Provide any different than what the court had provided, which was sixty days.
And this is, this is a party who has been enjoined from filing bankruptcies before, so who knows what's going to happen. Second, second question is also court related, both the city and the county have funded Tacoma pro bono. Eviction defense assistance. The legislature appropriated twenty three million dollars to through the Office of Civil Legal Aid. Which they estimated would cover the expense, at least in the six largest counties. And now Tacoma pro bono, I understand, is asking for more money, at least from the county. When they've got a state funding source, do we know what their state funding was and what they did for the money we gave them? As opposed to things that were funded by the state?
I believe that a couple of weeks ago, the manager asked me to look into that, and I believe it pays for approximately one. F T E attorney and part or all of a support person. I can get you more detail as to what those positions do, though.
And did they, did they disclose what was paid for by the state?
I I don't know that, and I will have to get back to you on that part.
Because the state fiscal note indicated it was paying for everything. I know other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter.
Mr. Caulfield, in the in the comments about, I'm glad to hear that Lhasa got the. Three and a half million dollars from the county. And that we're looking to go to for some state dollars to help them get to the. You know, there's seventy percent of what they they need. But is the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership. Engaged with that project to help get that funding, or are we sort of? Taking a lead on it?
Well, Councilmember Brandstetter, Lhasa has taken the lead on securing their own funding in terms of applying through different agencies. Matter of fact, they're waiting for you to issue your RFP on the available ARPA funds that the city has to apply for that. As far as working with SSHAP, I don't, I don't, I don't know if they're engaged with them or not.
Because it just seemed that that organization was going to look at the different state. Lots of money that can be used for housing and try to. Advise us on how we can get some of that into Pierce County. And we should make them aware of the project anyway, in case they. Have something that they can do. The three proclamations that you mentioned, I'm fine with the Chamber of Commerce's fiftieth anniversary and the and the. And the childhood cancer program, which is an active program that a lot of organizations in Lakewood support in conjunction with. Mary Bridge, actually, and I guess I'm not particularly keen on a proclamation on the Leave Ten group that is. Kind of an Olympia group, and I'm not particularly aware of them being active in Lakewood. And I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to give that message to 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 our citizens by urging people to. What to do with what to do with their estate planning.
Isn't that the one that came from? The one with Tacoma Tacoma Community Foundation?
I believe so, Mayor.
Yeah, and the Leave Ten i- is something, just by way of education background, is something that the Lakewood Community. Foundation is supportive of because they're kind of a subset. And they have their funds flow through the Tacoma Community Foundation organization, so they're trying to just encourage philanthropy generally, not in Olympia per se, but certainly in Lakewood.
Yeah, I I I just not quite sure that that's a message we as a council should be at the end of a proclamation saying, and we encourage everybody in the city to.
To contribute or donate.
Do that in their in their estate. And I guess that I would. Say that that was in our discussions with the library, and I know that. Three years ago, we acquired the property in Tillicum, in our mind, it was a place that a library could go. But I do think in some of our recent ARPA discussions, some other alternative uses of that property. At least, at least were 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 mentioned as possibilities, and I wouldn't want to. Go to the library and say it's yours for the asking. That in terms of doing that.
We'll probably know more once they come back with their recommendations and their processes complete, and we've got a board to board meeting. Or probably help inform us.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to chime in on the Lhasa thing. The amount was three and a half million, I watched the presentation today, and it's ARPA money, so there is a time. Element to this, right, twenty twenty five, or you know, it's gone out, so.
The county side, right?
It's on the county side, and in the presentation, the person presenting said. That, you know, one of the reasons they were supportive of it was because the city of Lakewood is so supportive of the project. And so I don't know what their expectations are, what they've been told beyond what we've already done. But that was a, that was mentioned, that the city of Lakewood is is supportive of it.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Anderson, on that?
I just, when you're talking about projects like ARPA, I saw recent interpret or the Lhasa profit. Project with ARPA money. Seen a recent interpretation that says you can make it a loan and the money comes back cleansed and you get to keep it. So you can change the color of money. You could, you could, there's a recent interpretation that you can change the color of ARPA money into general fund money. By making a loan, kind of like C D B G, it goes back into the pot, but that the ARPA money would, you'd get to keep. The money when it came back on, if you make a loan to a nonprofit to do like like they used to do. And instead of forgiving it all upfront, you can make it forgivable. On a variety of terms is the point, you can either have a payback.
Getting repaid.
Yeah. Or or forgive it or make it no interest, there are a variety of options.
Very good, any other questions of Mr. Caulfield? So I was going to ask about the proclamation, so we're good on two of the three, does that sound like you're all fine on that? Not as excited about the third on the estate.
I don't know if it's government's function to tell people what to do with their estate plans, I just have a problem with that.
Okay. Government kind of does that with estate taxation at the state and federal level. In a sense.
Yeah, I have to spend money to avoid.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. All right, is that it, Mr. Caulfield? Very nice, so we'll turn to council comments, I'll start with Councilmember Bell, that was quick, Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Brandstetter. Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Anderson.
Need to be excused next Monday, I'll be out of state for a wedding.
Very good, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Briefly, I did attend the Lakewood Promise Board meeting on Thursday, and they have some great plans coming forward with the youth. They want to get the youth more involved, and they're working more toward. Improve their communication, so just wanted to share that with you, they will be coming to council, so thank you.
Great, I just had a couple, on Tuesday, the thirtieth, I attended a business view interview with the city manager and our economic development manager for a publication that will. Hopefully say kind things about the city of Lakewood and its fine economic development work. Parks for Parks, I'll be at the event on Thursday, the eighth, I think I sent an email if the clerk can RSVP for me because it's got this weird Google thing and it makes a pop up. And I can't put anything in, it's a pain in the butt. There, there is a gentleman, I forget his last name. Mr. Anderson may know Kip, forget his last name, but he's a contact with Clark Construction, you and I met with. I can try to get you his email, but it'd be nice to get that to him or his representative, so they, if they would like, they can appear for that as well, so I'll work with you on that tomorrow morning. Sometime around five in the morning, we don't want to give ourselves too much time after tonight. So we can get that to him, and then on the ninth, the nine eleven, I will be there at two P M for that. Remembrance opportunity. And then finally, with all things Gary Oak Day, I just wanted to put a comment out to you. There is a broken large Gary Oak branch hanging over the public right of way. On this side of Park Lodge Elementary on, you're aware of it? Is that going to stay until after the tree code is adopted, or are we going to do something with that one? It's theirs, okay.
Mayor, the school district approached us on it, so they're working to get it removed.
Got it, because it was right in the way of the sidewalk today, so anyway, that's all I have, thank you, we're adjourned.